All right, I'm calling this meeting back to order of the Sacramento City Unified School District. Item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent, can you please guide us?
Thank you. Please stand.
Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 4.2, Broadcast Statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety. It will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, December 8 at 12:00 p.m., and Monday, December 19 at 12:00 p.m. It will also be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be reviewed on Metro Cable's 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative, along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do have a comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will please, we will ask you that you please defer your comment until the item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cellphones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Perfect. Thank you. Item 4.3, Recognition of Outgoing Board Members. I just want to take a moment to thank Member Garcia and Member Wu for their time on the board. Member Garcia has been with us for four years and has been a champion for her area, and Member Wu has been with us for a total of 12 years, the senior on our board. And I just want to say, take a moment to say thank you so much for the time that you both have spent on our board, for being the champions for our students. And just, it's always hard, you know, when you lose one on our board, as Member Murawski heard at our last board meeting. It's a, it's an exciting time to bring on new board members, but it is hard losing one as well. So, thank you so much for both of your, for your times, that you have served our students in SAC City. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Heep?
We do have one public comment from Lisa Murawski.
Welcome, Member Murawski.
Trying to figure out how this thing works. It's obviously, it's a little bit odd for me to be on this side of the dais, but I'm so happy to come back and be able to recognize the outgoing board members that I have had the pleasure and honor to serve with over the last four years. Daryl, you are a man of few words, as most of us know. I think what folks don't, don't always understand is the wisdom and experience and knowledge behind that ability. You took this job so seriously, and you were such a solid support and foundation for this district through many, many challenges, through many, many tough years, always thinking about what our kids need. And few, few people know that you also served us, you know, on Council Grade City Schools, as a CSBA delegate, so your, your board service really went above and beyond. Thank you. It's been an honor serving with you. Member Garcia. Letitia, I, it's been such an honor and pleasure serving with you. You are so sharp, so dedicated, just, your work ethic is amazing, you're tenacious, you're caring, and you're focused on the needs of kids. You brought so much to this board, and, and I've really benefited from our relationship, working together, working through difficult and challenging problems, questions, policies. I, I just, I treasure the, the time we were able to serve together and wish you both the very, very best. Happy holidays and some relaxing time with your families who deserve to see more of you. So, with that, just, thank you so much. It's been, it's been just the honor of a lifetime to serve with you both.
I see you already look five time, five, five years younger. Do we have any other board comments? Member Phillips?
It has been a ride these last two years, and I do want to thank Daryl for his, for his knowledge and his very short and to-the-point statements made to me about what I'm learning and what I'm doing here as a board member. And for Letitia, she has been kind of a mama bear for me, to guide me in ways that I needed to be guided. I'm thankful to her, I truly am. And I, I wish you all the best. Daryl, you gonna make good trouble? Make good trouble, Daryl. Thank you guys for being here for me.
Member Villa?
I will also say the last two years have obviously been very challenging to serve on a board, to start via Zoom, not knowing you personally, and being able to spend this time together. Both of you, again, as so many have said, a wealth of knowledge. You guys have so much experience outside of the board that you can bring to this dais that have impacted so many communities and so many students, so many families. I am beyond thankful that I've been able to have so many conversations with you and gain insight of things that I was not even aware were an issue, or that something that our community needed, because you knew. You have so much experience, and I really, really appreciate you both taking the time to spend with this board as a collective, as individuals. You will, I know you will continue to do wonderful things for so many community members, so many families, and so many students. Again, this is not goodbye. I'm sure we will definitely see each other in the future. Daryl, I have some M&amp;M's for you. You're my guy. Again, thank you both. I really appreciate all your family's support as well. I know it's never hard, it's never easy, excuse me, to spend so much time together as we've had the last two years, Thursday nights going until sometimes 2:00 in the morning. So, like I said to Lisa, enjoy your Thursday nights, getting those back with your family. And thank you again. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Member Rhodes?
So, I, I will try to keep my comments brief, because as you guys know, sometimes I get a little long-winded. So, for Daryl and Letitia, one of, one of the great things that we have to acknowledge is you guys put your hat in the arena and stepped into leadership. And being a leader of anything is not easy, and doing the people's work is not easy. So, I want to commend you guys for that. Solace of all this, we understand that these seats don't belong to individuals, and they're the people's seats, and so you guys served the people while, while your time was meant to be. And, and I appreciate that. Leadership is hard. Last two years is hard, but you were there through it all, and so I want to give my appreciation and thanks for you guys being part of our team. Letitia.
Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you very much, President Pritchett. I too want to just echo the comments of your fellow board members, Member Garcia and Member Wu, for your tenacious dedication and very difficult decision-making as well. As I look at you, Member Garcia, and your first board meeting, it was a very different kind of meeting, and I know that you made a commitment, as others, that you would do everything you could to put the district in a much better position moving forward in terms of sustainability and fiscal health, and that required some very tough decisions. And while there will be times where we don't always agree, your tenacious commitment to the decision-making process, which was a collective one, is something that I deeply admired from both Member Wu and from you, Member Garcia. I wish both of you very well, and I look forward to continuing our relationship.
Thank you. All right, the floor is yours. Member Garcia?
Thank you, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. First, I would like to congratulate the incoming board members and wish them the very best as you begin your journey in service to kids. So, thank you. I would like to thank the voters of Area 2 for giving me the opportunity to serve on this board for the last four years. It has been a truly humbling experience. Statistically speaking, I shouldn't even be up here. This work has always been my passion. I share the lived experience of 70% of our low-income, 40% of our Latino, and 20% of our English learner students in this district. There hasn't been a single day that I didn't feel the privilege, the responsibility, and obligation to do whatever I could to better serve kids. As my daughters recently reminded me, I'm always on a mission and often forget to stop and smell the roses, but today, I get to do that. I walked into this district on the verge of bankruptcy, and given my professional experience, I knew what was in store for me, many hard decisions. I was determined to avoid bankruptcy and leave this district better than I had find it, and we have done that, and so much more. Today, the district is fiscally healthy, and we've made big investments. We've hired more people, we've given raises, expanded mental health services, launched Universal TK, expanded Universal After-School programs, passed the largest school facilities bond in the district, in the history of this district. At Hiram Johnson, building a new baseball field, secured a $1 million state grant to finish a state-of-the-art golf facility, and to launch a CTE program in partnership with Building Trades. Addressing community issues, Little League fields, scoreboards, and the vacant Old Marshall School. I worked hard to make District 2 better than before, and I am confident Mr. Singh will do the same. I would like to thank everyone that I've had the privilege to work with, from the classroom teachers, to school staff, principals, parents, district staff, community members, and board colleagues. These accomplishments would not have been possible without you. Superintendent, thank you so much for being a stubborn advocate for students and for working with me on issues with an open mind while still trying, while still staying true to equity. I want to thank my husband and daughters, who have made the greatest sacrifice of all over the last four years. There is a lot that I will miss, there's a lot that I won't miss, but in the end, it's been worth it, because I've made, I've done my part to help advance the work, to better serve kids, and with a full heart and deep gratitude, I thank the community and voters of Area 2. Thank you.
Member Wu, the floor is yours.
I want to thank everyone here. I want to thank the voters who elected me three times, and I want to say thank you to all the teachers for doing the work for all of our children. I want to thank the staff at Serna, and I want to thank the employees who belong to SEIU, who drive the buses, who feed their students, and everything. So, a thank you to the staff at Serna and the schools. You're all awesome. My special thanks is to Jorge though. You're a pragmatist and a doer, and in short, a genius. My heartfelt thank you goes out to you. To my colleagues, old and new, remember to not let adult wants get in the way of student needs. That is the most important thing. And remember to stay committed to making this the destination district, one where all students are given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both, and as a token of our gratitude to you, we have your apples and the lovely plants and flowers that are in front of you. I have yours that you didn't get. Would you like to come get it?
There you go. Thank you.
Item 4.4, Ceremonial Oath of Office Given to the Newly Elected Board Members. First up, Member Jean. They're bringing a microphone over for you, if you'd like to. Oh. That would help, huh? Here you go. Brian, there you go.
For the Office of Sacramento City Unified School District, Board Member for Trustee Area 1, I, Tara Jean.
I, Tara Jean.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
If you could please take your seat on the dais. Next up, Member Caetara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
If you please take your seat on the dais. Next up, Member Singh.
For the Office of Sacramento City Unified School District, Board Member for Trustee Area 2, I, Jasjeet Singh.
I, Jasjeet Singh.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
All right. That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
If you could please take your seat on the dais. Julia Abia, second grade student from Caleb Greenwood Elementary.
Do board members get to say a statement now?
Sure, we can allow that, absolutely. Yeah, before we move on, do we have any board members that have statements?
Well, I would, I would love to hear that.
Member Rhodes?
Okay, I just said something there. So, I, I think that, you know, in any occasion, we have new board members, and I'll give them opportunities to say a few words, especially to the community that has come out in droves to welcome them, I think will be appropriate. So, before I make any statements regarding my new colleagues, I, I think that it was appropriate to give them a chance to address the community that's here for them.
Who would like to go first? Member Jean?
Evidently, I'm getting the head nods, so, hello. For those of you who don't know, I'm Tara Jean. I teach high school English, and I have dedicated my career and so much of my life and energies to students, and I learned very, very quickly that the decisions that are made for our kids are so often made by people that don't have experience in the classroom beyond perhaps being a student themselves. And I knew that I needed to bring my voice and raise my voice with my experiences to the places where decisions were made. And that, in February, March, led me to good conversations with people that said, "What about the school board?" And I said, "Yeah, that's, that's what I want to do next." So, I am here for the kids of SAC City to bring my 17, 18 years of classroom experience into the conversations and debates, and to the responsibilities and duties that we just swore to, to know that my experiences and the stories of my students can benefit the conversations we have here and the students here in SAC City. So, thank you to everybody who showed up, to everybody who walked, who supported this. You don't get here alone, and it's humbling, and I will endeavor to do my best to, I don't even know what to say after that, to be everything that you're hoping that we can do together and be together. Thank you.
Beautifully said. Member Caetara?
I just want to thank everyone who made this possible, everyone who walked for me, everyone who supported me. There's so many people to thank, but I'd like to take a special time to thank my family, my wife Teresa, my son Torsten, my daughter Tegan, they're busy talking, so. My mother-in-law Elaine is here. My father-in-law walked for me more, almost as much as I did, and crazy. I, if you would have asked me 10 years ago if I'd be on a school board, I would not have thought that was in the realm of possibilities for me, but having my kids in this district and seeing that they need help and other kids in our district need help really drove me to do this. And I am fully 100% committed to making the changes that I know our district needs to make and which everyone I've talked to on the campaign trail acknowledges need help with. We're a new board now today. Anytime you add one member, people keep saying this to me, it becomes a new board. There's been a lot of change here, but I think we're going to have a really positive, collaborative effort to really make the changes that I know every single one of us sitting up here today want to see happen. And just, you know, a final note, I want to say once again, thank you so much, Teresa, for everything, and thank you in advance for all the long nights that are coming. I love you. Thank you.
Member Singh?
Oh. What is this? Okay, thank you. So, I'm actually going to start with the traditional sick greeting, "Vai Gruji Ka Casa, Vai Gruji Ki Fati." And I say this to invite you all into this space with me in honor of my community and the sacrifices my people have put in place so that I can be here today. I owe my thanks to the divine, the divine power that exists in each one of us and amongst us today, to put me in a position to, put me in a position to really work for the community. This victory was made possible by love, through faith, and through hope, that we are willing to build a more inclusive, just, and fair system and society and community for every single student, every single person who makes this community work, Area 2 and beyond. It is not about Area 2, it is about the entire Sacramento City Unified School District and everybody who makes it possible, and I'm going to fight for everybody every single day, and I swear by that. And I'm going to fight for everybody, every single day, and I swear by that. I want to thank my wife, my beautiful wife. Thank you for swearing me in. She had no idea that's what she's supposed to do, so I definitely put her on the spot. I also want to thank my parents, my in-laws, my siblings, every single person who has played a role tonight. I want to really thank our educators and our staff. I want to thank SCTA, SEIU. I know you're all here today. I see you out there, and I really appreciate you. I know that's, uh, I didn't even know. I thought we were supposed to start exactly at 6:30. I'm like, why are we still sitting here? We need to be in this room. I know everybody's waiting. And I also want to thank some very special people. I want to thank Robin Rahil for putting on such an awesome campaign. I want to thank Vanessa Kudubek for putting this awesome team together. I want to thank Amr Shergill for convincing me to do these things. And at the end of the day, I also want to thank every single person who voted for me. And even if you didn't vote for me, I'm still representing you. I'm up here fighting for you. You will realize that. And we will make sure we build a better community. Thank you so much. Okay, so, I'm, this is like the most filled I've seen a boardroom in a long time. So I, so I appreciate you all. First, to my colleagues, I want to say congratulations to each of you. I'm excited for your family, your friends, your supporters. I'm excited for the voters who put you here in the seat. And some might say that, um, welcome to the starting line. But I would say that's only partially true. Because I want to acknowledge the hours in the gym that got you to the playing field. You know, we want to recognize the moments that you prepared and the life experience that prepared you for this moment in time that is yours right now to serve the students of Sacramento Unified School District. And this moment is a beautiful moment, and you're going to have more moments to come. And with the realization that the work we do here is the people's work, these are the people's seats, like I said earlier. They don't actually belong to any one of us. They, they belong to all the people out there. And so with that understanding, I look forward to working with you guys and bringing all of you guys' unique passions, interests, and knowledge to our board so we can continue to move our district forward. Thank you for taking up the mantle. Thank you for being part of the playing field. And thank everybody else in the audience today. And welcome to Sacramento City Unified School District team. Welcome to you guys.
Thank you, Member Rhodes. Welcome to the SAC City family. All right, on to item 4.5, stellar student Julia Abia, second grade student from Caleb Greenwood Elementary, and Louisa Avila, a first grade student from Caleb Greenwood Elementary. Member Singh, your first duty, if the floor is yours.
The best duty, all right. So, let's start. So I'll have a few, I'm just going to say it out loud. I'm going to read some nice things written here, and I, I love what I've already read. So both Julia and Louisa, is that right? Louisa Avila are recommended as stellar students because of their excellent behavior and great work ethic. Julia's teacher, Ms. Christensen, said that Julia does an amazing job in class. She consistently does all her work. It is also always done really well. She is helpful and respectful in the classroom. She was recently nominated for an IB award for being principal this month. Julia is absolutely a stellar student. Louisa's teacher, Ms. Bond, said Louisa is a pleasure to have in class. She has a kind heart, is an enquirer, and works diligently on her academics. Julia and Louisa also participated in expanded learning. Their team leader, Ms. Diana, always talks about their excellent behavior both in the classroom and during outdoor recess time. They're always on task and a lot of the time are never in need of a reminder to work on homework or find a quiet activity to do during assigned homework time. When it is enrichment time, they're also very engaged, and you can tell they are eager for more. We are all proud of them, both, and believe they are excellent model students. Good job, Julia and Louisa. Congratulations.
Julia and Louisa, would you like to say something to the board? All right. Mr. Heap, can we get the dice, or the podium down a bit? Come right up. I don't need the mics on. There we go.
I want to thank Ryan for giving me this award, and I'm very thankful for getting this award and a happy, and merry, and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Very sweet. All right, Member Singh will be coming down to take a picture with you. Oh, we're all going, okay, good.
Let me get one break. Yeah, so everybody can go.
All right. Before we move on to item 5.0, we'll be taking a 15-minute recess. We have a cake for you guys and a bistro so you can visit with your loved ones for 15-minute recess. Calling this meeting back to order. Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are three announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, at a prior board meeting on November 17th, the then Board of Education approved a material amendment to the purchase and sale agreement for property identified as APN 0032020001000, commonly known as the former Old Marshall School site, by a six-to-zero vote with Member Villa absent. Material terms of the amendment include, one, a purchase price of $1,470,000; two, a closing date of December 21st; and three, confirmation that the buyer is aware of the existence of hazardous materials on the property, and with this knowledge, buyer is purchasing the property in its as-is condition and assuming responsibility for the remediation. That amendment has since been executed by the buyer. For clarification, all remaining items refer to actions taken tonight by the current board. The board this evening approved a special education settlement agreement identified as OAH case number 2022100579 by a vote of seven to zero. And the last announcement will be made by the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I'm very pleased this evening to announce that the board approved the following appointment. By a vote of seven to zero, the board approved the appointment of Mr. Paul Horl Souza as principal of Rosa Parks K8 School. Congratulations, Mr. Souza.
All right. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Can I get a motion? All right, can I get a second? All in favor, say a aye. Thank you. Item 7.0, public comment. Mr. Heap, how many public comment do we have?
We do, we have about 35.
Okay.
Let's begin with Skylar Lamb, followed by Virginia Si, then Maria Santa Maria, and Orlana Van Zant.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry. Do you want me to restart or no? Okay. I am here today to ask for the support of SUSD to fund MIP pathways and other such immersion programs into middle school and beyond. As we all know, a requirement to graduate high school is at least two years in a foreign language, whether it be French, Spanish, German, or Japanese. Extending already existing immersion programs into middle school and high schools will build upon a knowledge that kids already have, which will give them more of an opportunity to improve upon their skills, and they will also get a chance to learn more about the culture of the language. When you go into class to learn a language, what do you want to get out of? You want to get out of a class education and knowledge that you will learn and use for the rest of your lives. With only two years of education, most people forget all that, like when they go to college. And if you learn even more, what is it good for? Just something on a college resume? In an immersion program, you will learn the culture, and you will have more of an incentive to retain that knowledge and use it well. Otherwise, what's the point of having a requirement in the first place if you never have a chance to use the language or are too unsure to? On another point, learning a second language from a young age can help, help a youth learn to read faster as well as understand what they are reading. An article published by waterboard.org, an organization determined to blend the best aspects of learning science, mentoring relationships, and innovative technologies to form community, school, and home programs that deliver excellence to equity for all learners, states that because youth in immersion programs are exposed to multiple different languages at a young age that are better equipped compared to their monolinguistic peers to develop their phonological awareness skills, which is the awareness of, an ability to work with, sounds in a spoken language. Essentially speaking, this helps them learn to read faster. With all respect, we are the capital city. We should be paving the way for everything, including education. Widespread immersion programs in general are a big step to being that leader in education and will set the precedent for everyone to follow. In the words of Darryl Wu, "We need to make this the destination district." And extending immersion programs is a big step to doing that. Offering programs that no one else in the, in the area offers makes us stand out, and that builds a destination district. Thank you, board members, for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker?
We have Virginia Si, followed by Maria Santa Maria, and then Orlana Van Zant.
Hi, good evening. I'm Virginia Si. I'm a parent of a fourth and sixth grade students at William Land Elementary School. I'm speaking on the same topic of Mandarin immersion. I'm here on behalf of all the students and the graduates of William Land Elementary School to ask that the board and the district start expanding the Mandarin classes at the middle and high school levels. For the new board members, welcome and congratulations. As a quick background, the Mandarin immersion program at William Land is extremely popular. It attracts students from outside districts to transfer into the district to attend the program. And these students are so fluent by the end of sixth grade, but it stops. They have no advanced classes after sixth grade. They have no way of continuing their Mandarin studies. It's really a loss because these students are highly motivated, high achievers. They want to learn more and such that they take time out of their schedules to trek back to William Land once a week just to learn, take private classes from their teacher. It's just really a loss because these students understand the value of learning a language and learning it well and using it in their futures because we have a very, you know, increasingly interconnected world. So thank you, Board Member Rhodes, for meeting with some families before Thanksgiving break. And I am here to ask that we move forward, have concrete steps. How do we open up another class for the next academic year for these students?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Next is Maria Santa Maria, followed by Orlana Van Zant. Orlana Van Zant?
Good evening, Board and all on the dice. My name is Orlena Van Zant. I'm a proud parent of two elementary students in the district. I stuck with our district, I didn't leave it. I believe in our district. I'd like to take a moment to thank the outgoing board for their time served and their dedication. I will say I am very excited to see the new faces, the new leadership, and the new board members for better transparency and better accountability of our supervisor going forward. I'm also excited to see what we can do to help the kids that we kind of, we might have lost a little bit along the way during this time and see how we can get them caught up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next group of speakers Cheryl Fong, followed by Krista Triplet, then Juan Martinez, and Will Kennedy.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone, and congratulations to the new board members. I was here not too long ago, and it was a very emotional time for me, and I apologize for that. Everything was fresh. But once again, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Krista Triplet. My kids are in Sacramento School District, my son and my daughter. My daughter was one of the students that was attacked at Kennedy High School October 13th, 2:30 PM. That's embedded in my brain. I think about it every single day. My daughter, unfortunately, was attacked by off-campus students that got on campus during school hours and was assaulted. I got a FaceTime call from my daughter with blood coming down her head while I was at work. Almost lost my life trying to make it to my daughter. The reason I'm here tonight is because, um, just bring awareness. I'm pretty sure, we all know what's going on in the world right now. It has changed. It changed a lot. And the number one priority should be safety. Safety should always be a concern for any and everything that we do, especially for our kids while they're attending school, and especially for parents when they're dropping their children off at school. They expect for them to be safe. And the staff, because also a staff member and another student also was pepper sprayed, assaulted, and it just turned into a big madness. I was going to let it, you know, die down a little bit, but later on, I got another email. Another off-campus student got on campus, assaulted another student at the same school. Now this is becoming a problem. And I know a lot of parents were concerned about gates and having SROs and all of that. But like I said, times have changed, and we have to adjust with the times. Especially with all the school shootings, the fit and all abuse, everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Upon hearing of the incident that happened at Jonathan Kennedy High School, I was there. I am a part of the next-door community. I'm one of the leads. And as I asked last month at the last board meeting, that the reinstatement of the SROs be reinstated back into the Sacramento school campuses. It's necessary that we deter from the outside and elevate from the inside. And so at this time, I'm asking that the reinstatement of SROs and some discussion of school safety be put on the agenda for next month. Montyama Elementary School in the Pocket Area is the only elementary school that does not have a gate surrounding the school entrance, entrances. And that also needs to be addressed as well, too, on behalf of Will Kennedy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hi, my name is, my name is Juan Martinez. I wanted to bring to your attention the Wi-Fi issues that the district is having. I know a lot of students are having issues connecting. I know a lot of students are having issues connecting. I know I have issues connecting at times. I'm a teacher for this district. At the same token, I also want to commend Mr. Bob Lyons, who graciously took the time before the board meeting, about 15, 20 minutes where we had time to discuss and talk issues of concern. I'm pretty sure, one of the main reasons is not enough staff, or the reason, I'm sure people had to have known, maybe not enough money, who knows what. But regardless, we learned issues coming from the COVID regarding connectivity and whatnot. And if we know about it, then why aren't we maybe moving forward in taking care of issues? Again, I do want to commend Mr. Bob Lyons for taking time. He didn't have to, but he did it. And then at the same time, we were discussing, so I am very grateful that he did that. He didn't have to do it, but he did it. You know, I did come in here a little mad, irritated, not only as a parent, but also as a teacher, you know, and thanks to him, able to calm down, right? And re back and rethink how my approach is gonna be coming up here to tell you about the issues. But we do have a serious issue with kids not logging on, not getting in, and then what do we do? What am I gonna tell them? All the time, "I know, I got it. I'm trying to work on it." But I'm at the point that if we don't get that, maybe I'll start bringing my kids here, students, and have them tell you guys the issue, and you can tell them why we should continue to have that issue. I tell them that every day. I would love to hear that from you guys. I don't know what else to tell you guys, but please, let's look into this and let's fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, Will Kennedy. Next group of speakers, Cassandra Willis, followed by Kathy Salon, Kathy Nugent, and then Linda Smith.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I am Cassandra Willis, and I am a transportation driver 27 years. And I want to just first off by saying thank you guys for, the new board members. We're so appreciative to have you guys at Transportation, and actually, all of you guys, including you, Ms. Aguilar. We are opening up our doors to you guys. Come down and visit with us, hop on the buses, take a school bus ride, a field trip with us. And we would just like to say that, you know, we all, just nationwide, we're all short in, as far as transportation drivers. And I just want to put in the back of you guys' mind, or in the front of you guys' mind, to please just keep us in mind because we do, we go above and beyond of our call of duty and, you know, all the different certificates and things like that that we have to adhere. It really is, it's time-consuming, but it's what we do. We love our job. We love exactly what it is that we do. And I just, you know, I just want to say to you guys, please, just, just keep Transportation in the front of your minds. And like I said, we welcome you guys, and welcome, welcome, new board members. Thank you. Appreciate it. And I think the other ladies are gone.
Next speaker.
Kathy Salon, followed by Kathy Nugent, and then Linda Smith. Next group is Esther Gonzalez, followed by Veer Singh, then Xena Perez, and Gil Patterson.
Good evening, Board Members, and welcome to the new members. My name is Esther Gonzalez. I'm a school bus driver. I started when I was 23 years old, now I'm 50. And I'm concerned about, we need more bus drivers. We need more money to bring more drivers. Because right now, I've been there for 28 years, I'm still getting paid $20 an hour. And I've been there not because it's the love for the children, that's what I was there. But now that I'm getting older, I know that I would like to retire with good, you know, to have a better salary, like more money, to be able to retire. And also, we need drivers because when I retire, one more people to drive these kids. We need them. We need drivers. And it's sad that our district needs new buses. Our buses break down every day. Right now, I'm driving a bus that's from 2012. It's coming apart. The turn signal comes out every day. I'm driving the mountains. I'm going to Slide Park. So every time that thing pops out, I have to put my hazard lights. And I know I'm risking their lives, too. So, we need attention in Transportation, you know? We are the ones that are carrying all this, our future, and every day, I'm worried because I say, "What happened? A bus broke down?" I know, they tell me, "The bus broke down? That's fine," you know? But if I'm over there in the mountains, you know, I'm risking these kids' lives, you know? So, I'm begging you guys to help us, bringing more drivers to our district. I got 10 drivers from San Juan District. They want to come and drive for us. But I'm not gonna lie to them, I'm sorry, because we're not getting good pay. So, you know, we need a raise, and we need to, you know, to hear it from you guys. Please, you know, think about what.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Veer Singh, followed by Xena Perez, and Gil Patterson.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone in the audience. It's been 22 years working at the school district. This is the first time, a opportunity to talk with the board members. I'm a driver slash instructor in my department at Transportation. I'm a driver instructor. Just last week, I had a call from a person looking for a job and asking me the amount that you guys are gonna offer me. I say, "You open the district website, everything is right there." He said, "Okay, I'm gonna give you a call back." And my director, which is Ron Hill, tells me, "Get him, because we need drivers." The next time he calls me, tells me I'm looking for somewhere else, is Folsom High School or Folsom-Cudover District, and they're paying them more to get in there. Far as I know, our drivers do our job every day. I know where we are since pandemic. We are short of staff everywhere. It is what it is. But as our department and Ron Hill are running the Transportation, I have get calls, I have people asking me what you guys pay, and they say, "I will call you back," but I don't hear from them. The next I know, they're having, going to El Grove or other district because they're paying them more. On that reason, I think we are short of drivers. We do our best every day. I drive whenever I can, every day, when I'm not training. But that is our job. We'll do our best to raise the community, to help the community grow up as a sexy and iffy school district. But I guess we need help at Transportation. We need help everywhere. If you guys look into it, it's fine, but there's people who want to work, but if they're paid somewhere else, they can work somewhere else. They're not coming to our department. But we'll do our best every day to transport and keep our community running.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Xena Perez and Gil Patterson.
Xena chose not to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome to our new board members. You've heard the drivers, you heard our trainer, you've been hearing us. The problem is, we're not hearing back. We can tell you problem after problem after problem. I can tell you years of being on the job. I can tell you bargaining team. I can tell you steward, treasurer. I can give you all of this. The thing of it is, we keep giving. As I spoke with a gentleman a few minutes ago, these drivers that fill up half of that room must be waking up at 4:00, 4:30 in the morning to get the children that is contracted ADA to the district, to the schools. When you're driving eight and nine hours, but you're having to be present for 12 to 13 hours. As I keep telling my drivers from the experience, this is all about numbers. As I'm standing talking to you, I see a countdown. This is numbers. The only numbers aren't matching is for their service, their diligent, hard work for the children. I'm gonna emphasize the children. We are out here, the teachers, the drivers, the custodians, fast food workers are getting paid more than our nutrition workers that we are getting grants for. I don't understand those numbers. We met with the superintendent a few years ago, I personally did, in the room upstairs. I'm looking at you. As a man-to-man, when we give our word, we try to make it happen. Xena gave me her time. Tried to make it happen. So as the board, I would like, as we said, come Transportation. Oh, but you gotta get there 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, and we don't leave until 5:30, 6 o'clock in the evening. As you heard another driver say, these buses break down. I'm gonna give you guys an example. I can show you pictures in my phone of a man that didn't pay attention. Bus 1812 hit that man, rolled that car. The car ended up in the intersection, on its top. A child came out, his head was bleeding. That driver could have been imprisoned, making basically fast food worker money. We're told we cannot get overtime, so they try to cram it in. There's a driver back there that has to rush, that's against the vehicle code. We cannot work tired. That's why we have to be so many hours of rest. We don't set those rules, Board of Education, Highway Patrol, DMV. We just have to follow them. In doing so, you hear my voice crackling because I'm tired. I had another driver back there falling asleep. You guys took a 15-minute break. We don't get these opportunities. I'm not gonna hear him, "Ha-hum." They work. They're deserving of some type of compensation. Let's don't give them nonsense. Let's give them your time and attention, because it's gonna reflect down to the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We have two, we have two speakers who have yielded their time to Shanna Just. So, Shanna Just is recognized for six minutes.
Congratulations, our new board members and our returning ones. So my name is Shanna Just, and I'm a teacher at Luther Burbank, but I'm also a constituent of Area 5. I was basically born and raised in this district. I've taught for 12 years at Burbank. I live in Parkway. Before that, I taught for 20 years at Hyrum Johnson, and I lived in Colonial Heights for most of my life. So these communities are near and dear to my heart. They're my communities. And I'm here today to advocate to actually implement community schools the way it was intended. I had the privilege of attending a five-day community school training this summer, put on, and most of the sessions were run by people actually doing the work, people who are part of the statewide transformational assistance center that's designed to help districts fully implement community schools as intended, but also from people doing the actual work, teachers and school leaders in San Francisco, in Anaheim, and Los Angeles, who have already been doing this work. This work is happening nationwide. And when I learned about, over the training, the California Community School Framework, the four pillars, the cornerstone commitments, the proven practices, and then, when I got back and I compared it to the district's plan for implementing the new community schools grant, there is a major disconnect. This community school plan submitted by the district to the school board basically ignores the community school framework. There is only one pillar, and that's the pillar of, sorry, I haven't, integrated student supports that this even addresses. It ignores the other three pillars, it ignores the forced cornerstone commitments, and it ignores the four proven practices. It's almost as if the person who wrote, or people who wrote, the community schools plan for the district hadn't read the California State Framework for Community Schools. It was issued last January. There's no excuse. It's like they haven't read the trailer bill that came out this summer that spelled out exactly what that money could and couldn't be used for. See, the thing about community schools, community schools are something that's supposed to be done with the community, not to the community. And this is done to them. Community schools, properly run, can transform people's lives, the lives of students, the lives of the teachers, and the lives of the community members. But it is something done with them, and they're a part of. Community schools are supposed to be governed of the community, by the community, and for the community. That's not what this is. So I urge all board members to really take a hard look at that community school framework, at the trailer bill that spells out, and let us do community schools right. Burbank and its feeder schools, Johnson and its feeder schools, they're the ones that received this grant. So I'm advocating for them, for all of them, for our students and our communities, to do this right, do this the right way. We have the power to transform people's lives. We have the opportunity to transform people's lives. So let's do it. We're ready to do the work. We've lost six months. We should have already been doing this. We should, second semester, be ready to go on those needs and assets assessments done by those communities, and yet we're not. We can't afford to throw away time. Time isn't unlimited. We cannot afford to lose the time. We have the money, the funds were provided, not only to the schools, to be spent and determined based on the needs of those schools. The districts receive separate money to do the district program. Okay? This needs to be done right, not this. This is done to us, you need to do it with us. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next group of speakers, we have Teresa Hanneman, Damian Harmony, followed by Cara Seinhorse, and Scott Chase.
I'm Teresa Hanneman. I teach third grade at Cap City. I first would like to welcome our three new board members. I am hopeful that your addition to the school board will help to refocus the board, to advocate for equity among all of our students, no matter what school they attend, to mend relationships with your labor partners, and to finally make this district a destination district for students and employees. I am hopeful that you will work with us as partners, as opposed to treating us like adversaries. I am hopeful that this board will spend more time engaging with the community, students and employees, and less time passing resolutions. I am hopeful that you will keep in mind that the superintendent works for you, not the other way around. Last time I spoke here, Ingrid Hudgens and I asked for your help in getting science materials for our students at Cap City. While many students at Cap City still do not have the basic science materials that all of the other students in the district have, I am optimistic that we will get additional resources we need, including science kits for each teacher in multi-class grade levels. I'd like to thank Mr. Amorain and Ms. Lampkins for advocating for our students, and I'd like to thank Maquila Fetzer for being receptive to our concern. for being receptive to our concerns and for sharing our eagerness to get our students the materials they deserve.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Damian Harmony gave his time to me.
All right, four minutes.
Yeah. My name is Cara Seinhurst, and I have very close ties to this district. Both my parents graduated from Johnson, and so did I. My kids are in your district and yours. And of course, I work at Luther Burbank, and I see you there. I've been in this district as a teacher for 23 years, and I love my job. I absolutely love being a teacher here. I have a vision of what schooling could be in this district. And it includes arts programs, and music programs, and robust language programs. I would love to see every kid go to Sly Park. I scrimp and scrounge to take my kids to theaters and to go on the field trips that we can. I organize community service projects for my students at Burbank. And most of them, we have to do right by the campus because we just don't have money for transportation. But I would love to have everyone have all those same opportunities. Like, my kid at Caleb Greenwood gets to do stuff that my kids at Luther Burbank never got to do. You know, I'd love for my kids' teachers not to have to pick up shifts at, you know, Joe's Crab Shack. I want them to be able to take a day off and know that they'll have a substitute who can take care of the classroom. And we are desperately short of substitute teachers. I would rather teachers did not have to fight just not to lose things and not to, you know, have things taken away from us. I would like to come a little closer to keeping up with inflation. You know, and I know that's a problem all over. I would like the SEIU folks to be closer to keeping up with inflation with us. I would really like to just be able to use my considerable energy and creativity in the classroom instead of having to advocate all the time. I'm very heartened by the idea of a board that wants all those things too. And I feel hopeful and optimistic tonight. I do hope you'll remember, new board members especially, that as you cast votes, you are impacting the lives of real people in the classrooms, parents, teachers, students. And it's necessary for you to evaluate the information that's presented to you. You need to listen to the folks that advocate, both here and elsewhere. You can vote that there are enough supplies in the classroom, but that doesn't make there be enough supplies in the classroom. If you say that because you care about equity, all kids can go to Sly Park now, but some schools can't afford or can't get substitutes to come to the schools or can't get enough chaperones to actually make those trips happen, then those trips aren't happening. So, you know, we pay lip service to equity, and then equity doesn't happen. But we said it was important to us. And I don't think that's enough. I think we need to work harder to solve the problems that face our children and our schools. I'm a big believer in the democratic process that put you here. And I worked hard. And I know that you will advocate for the students and for the schools in your areas. And you'll put their needs above, you know, the importance of an appearance of unity. I'm sure that you are gonna put the students' needs first. I also know this is a really hard job, and it involves a lot of late nights and sometimes dealing with angry constituents and the need to really be... I saw the packet, I saw the agenda packet, right? You have to be familiar with that information. And I recognize that you are doing a really hard job in service to your community. And I appreciate you, and I welcome you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Scott Chase. I'm a product of SAC City Schools. I started with SAC City in 1970. Was a kindergartner. Went to Kit Carson, graduated SAC High, class of '83. For the last 34 years, I've taught in this district. I teach fourth grade in Mark Twain. Tonight's a very special night. It's brought to you by some amazing numbers. 65,000 phone calls were made for these new school board members. 43,000 doors were knocked on. 3,500 handwritten notes were written. But I also want to talk about the hundreds of SCTA volunteers that made this night possible. I also want to focus on two numbers, though. One number is 100 degrees, and the other number is one. Late August, I've lived in E Sac since '94. My house doorbell rang, and Jazit Singh, it was a warm day, it was about 100 degrees, and he was there and telling me he was running for school board. At that time, I didn't know you, and I didn't know you were endorsed by SCTA. But I want to make a special thanks to you. I also want to tell the truth. Confucius once said that "three things that cannot stay hidden for long: the sun, the moon, and the truth." The truth is, this district has never been in financial bankruptcy. The truth is, in 2013, the state of California changed the way it funds public schools. And this school district has benefited dramatically from that amount of money. This is called local control funding formula. And school districts like SAC City that have high socioeconomic, kids living in poverty, high kids living with limited English, and lots of students living in foster homes. Everywhere these funds have gone, there's been fights. I challenged everybody on the board tonight to Google what I'm saying. Google Oakland Unified. Google LA Unified. And Google SAC City Unified. And you're gonna find... Last point I want to make is I want to end it with this one note. This district received this year 12.84% ongoing raises from the state of California. At no time in the history of this district has the funding ever been as high as it is right now. It's record funding. And I want to thank the three board members for all your work and your effort. And I think we're gonna have a brand-new district starting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next group of speakers, Carly Fawcett,
Good evening. My name is Carla Fawcett. You were close. I'm the chapter president of SEIU. And I cannot tell you, I just wanna jump up and down into jumping jacks. A new day has come for the classified and for the labor. We fought really hard. For all of you guys that are up there, we've had one hell of a lousy last couple of years. My members are looking forward to meeting with you. I know we have regular conversations with a few of you. Past board members refused to meet with classified. Past board members refused to talk to classified. And that crap has got to stop. We serve this district. This district cannot run without my members. My members pick your kids up, and they take them home. They feed those babies. They take care of those kids in classrooms. They care of the special needs. They change their diapers. They feed them. And they work with them, hand in hand, all day long. Those babies are their babies. And it's time we get the respect that we deserve. We're no longer gum on the bottom of this district's shoes. I have given you each business cards. I know we've had meetings prior, but I would like to set up regular monthly meetings, at least with you. And I would like you to come to our chapter meetings once in a while so you can talk to the members because the members have a lot to say to you. They need to be heard. Thank you for your time. Welcome aboard.
Hi there. My name is Alice Mercer. I'm a teacher over at Bancroft Elementary. Today is a new day. We have a new school board. And while I have hope it will be truly a new school board, a board that is focused on students, families, and the staff that help run our schools. I want to remember, remind everybody about how we got here. I used to come to the school board meetings. I would come to warn prior boards about the impact wrong-headed decisions, about the fact that their budgets did not add up and were being misused to hurt not just employees like me, but our precious students. I and others warned the board that there would be a price to pay for their feckless leadership and complicity with bad management and governance. But it was howling to the wind. So I stopped coming and started, in small ways myself, to work towards getting a board that cared about these issues. Over time, more and more educators, staff members, and parents began to see that this was needed too and joined in. And now, we've had an election that offers a path forward. Make no mistake. You are all accountable to the public. We will support your efforts to move forward in positive ways because none of us can do this alone. It's a partnership. But backsliding cannot and will not be tolerated. You've heard what we need from the bus drivers about the Wi-Fi, about a host of issues. And there's a lot on your plates. What we need to see is some positive change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jim Riffle. I'm a chapter leader in one of your labor partners, SEIU 10 to 1. I'm one of Carla's members. We do want to work with you. We do not want an adversarial confrontation. We want to work with you. You may have seen a lot of the bus drivers and transportation people walk up and leave. They were not being rude. They have to get to sleep so they can be wide awake at 5:30 in the morning to transport the kids. The kids can sleep on the bus. They don't have that luxury. Sorry if you thought they were rude. They were not. We're having a hard time keeping bus drivers here. It's become to a point where we train them, we certify them, and they leave. We need to make it a destination district to train them, to certify them, where they want to work here for 20 years or longer. Some of them that were here talking to you, they've worked here for 28 years. That's incredible. Now, as a member of the union, I have been able to sit on many interview panels trying to hire people into the positions. Quite often, we get one candidate. We should be getting seven for every single position. One candidate doesn't always mean we get the best person in the job. Sometimes, we have to repost. Sometimes, we take the best we can get. That's not the way we should be. We should have seven people applying for every single posting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next group, we have two speakers who've yielded their time to April Ibarra. April Ibarra has six minutes.
Good evening, board and superintendent. April Ibarra, two kids at Johnson. And I want to share my thoughts as we welcome the three new trustees to the board. In doing so, I'm gonna address some important things that have seemed to be avoided and/or ignored. In the spring of this year, when SCTA and SEIU went on strike, the district closed our schools as they dragged their feet during bargaining. The district sent out messaging that blamed the unions for allegedly not wanting to bargain. The district also made the decision to close our schools, leaving thousands of students with learning loss. Students which normally depend on breakfast and lunch from their schools, and they went for two meals a day without. Families lost work because they depended on working during school hours because childcare is very expensive. Students that are battling, challenging mental health crises, and even students battling suicidal ideation lost their safe place at schools with their teachers and with the support staff. And although the district had supporters who blamed our teachers and support staff for closing our schools because of the strike, I saw with my eyes, and I know in my heart, that that wasn't the case. Families in our communities, by and large, have faith and trust in our educators because we see the work that they do for our kids day in and day out at their school sites. That is why families and community showed up to show support during the strike. And I say this because the strike could have been avoided if the district had bargained in good faith long before the strike took place. As a board, each of you were elected to represent the communities in each of your area. Keep in mind that you represent families who did not vote for you. You represent families who can't and don't vote at all. It is your civic duty to advocate for all, even those who don't have the same views and perspectives as you. You have a duty to advocate for the teachers and support staff who work for you and are the face of this district, even if you don't agree with their unions. The board failed to hear our outcry as many reach out to you in hopes for your support and good-faith bargaining. The board ignored all the voices that said they had no confidence in our superintendent. And they also ignored the voices that agreed they did not trust the decision-making or leadership of the superintendent. And I don't say that as a personal attack, Mr. Aguilar. I say that as a clear reality that we all saw and heard during the strike. The board failed us at large. And even if there are some loud voices in this community that may proclaim otherwise, I know firsthand they don't represent the majority. The majority decided that we would not allow this to continue. Families, community members, students, and educators all came together to ensure that this does not continue. Together, we knocked on doors. We reached out to voters, and we told our stories, our tireless stories, door after door after door. We collectively decided to take a stand because change needs to happen now. We can't afford more time. We can't keep waiting because you have to figure it out. The district needs to stop throwing the word equity around when I see firsthand that equity cannot happen in the district when the district continues to reject opportunities to work collaboratively with SCTA and SEIU. As a board, you get to tell the superintendent what needs to be done, not the other way around. As a board, you need to pay close attention to what you are voting to approve and disapprove. Equity is not happening in our schools. You just heard these workers talking about the lack of equity in the labor practices that were promised after we had ended the eight-day strike. You can either work collaboratively with all of us who work together to bring their voice to the table, and that includes the families and the union. Or I can assure you that we will come together again and work collaboratively to do this again in the next election. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, Terrence Gladney, followed by Shonda Wesley, and then Jean Shanley.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking Taylor for having his kids in the space. I wasn't here physically. I was on the road back from laying my great uncle to rest. But to see your kids participate, that's what this space is supposed to be about. We're supposed to be building pipelines so that they can see what's possible if they're engaged. So thank you for that, Taylor. I want to do my best to channel my uncle, Julius Burgess. He was 96 when he passed. So, you know, at that point, he was pretty much saying whatever he wanted. So I'm just going to preface it with that. This morning, we were in Berkeley, and I was walking around campus. I was at Cal, like 5 o'clock in the morning, walking around campus. And I was just thinking about all the students that he impacted because he was a chef at Larry Blakes. So I was thinking about how he most likely nursed their bodies and in turn also nursed their minds. He worked with his hands as a chef. He was a painter. His sister, my grandmother, she had her doctorate and she led social work in San Diego County. So it dawned on me that, you know, are we really doing enough to fulfill both of those possibilities? You know, we talk about college and career, but do we really, you know, equitably and equally focus on the career and those that are talented with their hands and giving them the opportunities to succeed as my uncle was able to do? As I told my family earlier, my uncle, he loved to go to the casino, he and my aunt. They would always go to Reno, and my uncle specifically loved dice. And I really just align that to the way that he lived and knowing that, you know, we're all on house money in terms of the time that we have every time we wake up. You guys as board members, we as community members, as parents, as just people in this world, nothing is promised, whether we live to be 96 like my uncle did or live to be short of eight like my son did. So in that, I ask you all and ask all of us as well collectively to maybe do as my uncle did and roll the dice, throw a pair, and as he might say, grow a pair. That means we have to stand on something more than what's comfortable. We have to make tough decisions. We have to ask more of ourselves and each other. And in doing that, then we can give the best opportunities to our kids. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. Hey, everybody. My name is Shonda Wesley. My daughter attends Caleb Greenwood in 4th grade. I wanted to first, even though they are gone, thank the outgoing members for their service running for office and being a public official. And a public servant is the toughest job around, and I'm aware of that. And I wanted to welcome the new board members on behalf of a large group of parents in support of COVID safety. We look forward to working with you. With the lack of regular student testing right now and the lack of testing and reporting outside the schools as well, our current case rate is artificially low. Anyone who has kids in school knows that there's a lot of parking now. Drop-off and pickup is easier, and that's because huge amounts of kids are missing from the school. And it's either the flu, it's RSV, or it's COVID. Other cities have already mandated masks. We aren't there yet. But I want to encourage the new board to, at a bare minimum, keep our current mask policy. So when it does go into high, we automatically mandate masks again in schools. And also, we should take a look at filtration and other safeguards and together, working with families who are concerned about COVID safety with the new board, we want to help you keep your daily attendance up and the money coming into the district by keeping the kids in the classroom, learning where they should be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
We have Jean Shanley. She's had three other people donate their time, so she has eight minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'd like to welcome the new board members. There's such an air of transition tonight. It's really exciting, and it's a perfect segue into the comments that I want to make tonight. I wanted to focus on mental health issues of our community members. There's been some emphasis on the students, which is really, really great, about supporting the students, understanding the stress and anxiety that they have been under because of the pandemic and isolation, suicide prevention concerns, and I support all of that. But there hasn't been any discussion about mental health issues and needs of the adults in the district, and so I wanted to focus on that tonight. So I'm referring to teachers, principals, assistant principals, school staff, office staff, the district administration staff, including the superintendent's office and the board members and all the parents in the district. I personally have witnessed a number of examples of like some disturbing incidents recently and over the past several months involving various adults in the district that are showing like some signs of pretty significant mental stress, which I believe is creating a negative environment for the students. So I'd like the district to consider that and look at it in more detail and possibly, you know, maybe a self-assessment survey or something for adults in the district. And I would focus on employees and, you know, possibly also parents. So when the adults are having stress, this transfers to the students, and the students suffer negative consequences, even abuse at times. It makes no sense to try and assess the students' mental health needs and provide support to the students if the primary cause of the student's stress is coming from the adults in the room and the adults are going untreated. So I personally witnessed some of this adult stress arising out of like COVID misinformation, COVID policies, illegal policies, COVID bullying, and even COVID paranoia. We have been learning over the past several days, weeks, and months that a significant amount of communications to the public about COVID over the past two and a half years did not come from a place of truth or science, but rather from behind-the-scenes political pressure, manipulation, and maneuvering of special interests. So most recent transparency regarding government officials' communications with Big Tech and the mainstream media is showing massive campaign to influence and even mind-control the population to follow prescribed politically motivated social engineering narrative. This misinformation about the pandemic has impacted all of us, and I don't want to get into the weeds on all of that tonight. I just want to mention that it's there and it's resulting in stress in the adults in the district. We have learned that school lockdowns never worked. They were never good for the kids. But how many people were screaming for lockdown? We learned that quarantining healthy kids was not good, had no science background. But how many people were demanding that? The masks don't stop airborne viruses. Many experts have come out not recommending masks in school for kids. The detriments outweigh the benefits. But many people still hanging, clinging to those masks. Vaccines don't stop transmission, on and on and on. Schools are not high-risk environments. But how many people think that schools are high-risk environments? Still misinformation around this. So many teachers' unions have pushed for lockdowns and masking, and we've learned this was never based on science. As a result, we have a community of traumatized teachers and staff who have been lied to and programmed to enforce these irrational narratives. Let me give you an example. Children at my school recently have been excluded from the cafeteria for lunch, even in the rain, because there is irrational paranoia around the virus. They were forced to sit outside on cold concrete, sitting little Indian-style on the ground, eating their lunch as quickly as they could, and they were not allowed to go in their classrooms because there was fear around the virus. There's no reason they can't eat in the classrooms, but this was what was being told to them, this was what was being enforced at the school. I think that the adults need support and that the officials at the school didn't realize that this made no sense. When masks were made optional last year, there was an incident where a teacher at my son's school told a student in the class that didn't wear a mask that he had to go to the back of the room. So he singled that student out and penalized the student, segregated and discriminated against the student because this teacher had a paranoia problem. At a recent community event at our school, the organizers told everybody they had a mask, even though that was not consistent with public health guidance. Where is this fear coming from? I think it's coming from the narratives that they've been receiving. So it's ongoing stress and just mental distress in the parents and teachers and adults. Last spring, they held an outdoor event where the crowd was corralled into the hallways outside the buildings. They were told they couldn't move around the whole property because they needed to keep safety. And I don't know how that was safety. I mean, the more you let people mill around and space out, the better it is, the more ventilation. But they restricted their, locked down half the campus, restricted everybody. I mean, why is this happening? None of it makes any sense. It's just, I can't think of a reason other than stress. Last spring, the high school, Kennedy High School actually, had prom rules where the vaxxed students, when they could do their own COVID tests for the prom, but the unvaxxed students couldn't do their own COVID tests. So when I asked the office why they were treating them differently, they had no answer. They just railed that there was, you know, cases were spiking. I was like, I understand that, yeah, but why are you treating people differently? There just doesn't seem to be a lot of analysis. Then, in this past fall, Kennedy admitted to people that they wanted to restrict high school tours because of the virus. They were afraid of people coming to the school. Meanwhile, within days of this, they had somebody attacked and bleeding at the school. A serious incident that did require their attention, but they're worried about the virus. And there's no prohibition against high school tours, but yet they were trying to restrict high school tours. So I'm concerned about the adults in the community and its trickle-down effect on the students. So maybe, you know, a survey, you know, ask people to check in, you know? Do you feel fear when you see children laughing and singing and breathing freely? Do you feel fear when you see someone without a mask on? Something to help identify, you know, who's harboring this microaggression behavior and where might it be trickling out to the students, resulting in silly mandates that they sit on the floor on concrete to eat their lunch instead of in the cafeteria. So that's what I want to talk to you tonight. Thank you so much for listening. Welcome to the board members, and I'll talk to you again soon. Have a good holiday and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Next speaker?
We have no more speakers.
Yeah, you need to fill out a card. Brian, can you give her a card and she can fill it out as soon as she's done with her comment?
Yeah, she can.
Yeah, she can fill it out.
She can come up?
Yeah, yeah. I've got it. Come on up and give your comment, and then you can fill out a card afterwards.
Hello, I'm Ms. Queen, and I work for the Unified School District at Oak Ridge Elementary. Before then, I was supposed to do my hours at Bret Hart and wasn't able to do it because they decided to go on strike. And so I went on strike along with everyone, every day. And then I did my hours, and now I work for the Unified School District at Oak Ridge Elementary. I never thought that what I was going to be hearing here today and what I seen on campus at the school that we need a lot of, they're paying substitutes more than they're paying the teachers a day. And they need instructional aids. They need interpreters for people who don't speak English. There's kids wandering around, not even being able to communicate with others or play on the playground because they're not being able to articulate their feelings or be able to get understood or understand what people are saying to them. And this whole meeting is overwhelming to be, speak for me to be the first time ever coming to one of these meetings and being with the school district. And I just think that also the probation thing that they have far as working for the school district, that you should be able to apply for any job while you're on probation with the school district. It shouldn't, you shouldn't have to, if you want to work for another position that is for the same, but more hours, you should be able to apply for that rather than get kicked out knowing that they need those positions at the school. Oak Ridge need a lot of teachers. Oak Ridge Elementary need a lot of instructional aids. Oak Ridge Elementary, we need help. Please help us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 8.0, Special Presentations. 8.1, Annual Organization Meeting of the Board of Education. Election of Officers. The board shall elect a president, vice president, and second vice president. Oh, my screen's blank. Member Kayata.
Thank you, President Pritchett. Tonight, I would like to move to bring a slate for our executive committee. For president, I would like to nominate Member Rhodes. For vice president, first vice president, Member Phillips. And for second vice president, Member Singh. Thank you.
So I would like to amend that respectfully. I would like to make an amendment that President Pritchett continue as board president, myself as first vice president, and Member Phillips as second vice president.
I will second that.
President Pritchett?
Yes. We have a motion and a second. It's open for discussion. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just for parliamentary purposes, are we hearing the first motion and voting on that? And then if that goes down, voting on the second motion that Member Villa said?
So the parliamentary procedure is first we'll need a second on Member Kayata's motion. Then there was an amendment by Member Villa and a second on that. That motion will be heard first on the amended motion, which was Member Villa's. If that passes, then the original motion as amended would be voted on. If that does not pass, then you would revert back to the original motion from Member Kayata.
Would the second be for Member Kayata now or after hers?
After mine.
Well, Member Kayata made a motion, and it requires a second, and then we will not acknowledge the amendment that was made. Because as it stands, the first motion didn't have a second, so it's not at issue. It went pretty quick, but, okay. So now we have Member Phillips who seconded Member Kayata's motion. That motion is on the floor. It was amended by Member Villa, and that amended motion was seconded by Member Pritchett. So now the board will discuss and vote on the amended motion first, and then we'll go from there.
Just one and no procedure.
Is there any other discussion? Wait, we're voting on Villa's? Slate, yeah, okay. Member Kayata?
Thank you. We are addressing Member Villa's motion right now. So to that, I would like to say thank you for introducing that, and I do think that we have both presented a very good possibility for the board. My reason for introducing what I introduced is I think we need a continuity, which both of our motions do have, which is why for president and first vice president, I have current, you know, previous board members. And then representation of the three new board members will be with Member Singh. I think that will allow us to reflect the current, I guess I'd say, input of the community represented in the vote that put the three of us on the board today while respecting the work that's been done by the previous board as well as boards before it. And I do think that with the board composition that I put forward, I think this will allow us to most effectively collaborate together to move in the direction that the three of us who've been elected and started serving tonight desire to do while, once again, reflecting the input of the previous board. So I will say my motion is respectful, and I do recognize excellent work from President Pritchett and you, Member Villa. I will say I also, for a future board meeting, I have proposed a reconsideration of the job of the president versus the executive committee. And I would like to go back to what we had before where there's input from multiple people to make sure that, you know, despite the fact that I think that Member Rhodes should be president, I want to make sure we have the input of three people when we set agendas. And so once again, by having current board members and incoming board members together, I think we can best accomplish that.
Any other? All right. Superintendent, roll call.
I was going to.
You had your light on, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Member Villa. Thank you. I respect your comments. I do want to make sure that it is also spoken in front of our public and to our staff and to this board and our superintendent that the work that this board and will continue to do is a joint effort and will always be, community first for students. And I think it's in a very challenging position to be in as board president, first and second. There's a lot of information that, you know, we may not all know, and I want to make sure respectfully coming into this position that folks are aware of the hard work, of the road ahead of us all. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So for clarity...
So for clarity. And I'm asking you for clarity.
For clarity, if the board's done with discussion, then a vote will be made on Member Villa's amended motion of, as-
The slate you talked about.
The slate that was proposed by Member Villa.
So as, okay, as I understood it, wouldn't Member Kayata need to accept or deny the amendment?
No.
At the right-
The board, the board is voting, the board is voting to, whether or not to amend Member Kayata's motion as Member Villa has presented it.
Okay.
So if the board votes to approve the amendment, then that will then go forward for the board to vote on the motion as amended with those three individuals as Member Villa presented it.
Okay, so we're voting on her presentation.
You're voting on her present, yes.
Her amendment, okay.
Superintendent, roll call.
That makes sense.
That makes sense.
Okay. Sorry, before roll call, one more time. We're going to call roll.
She made a motion to amend Member Kayata's motion with three different individuals.
We could say yes or no to-
With a second, with a second. So when you amend with a slate, it has to have a second, and that was, that was the process that just took place.
And, and so the board is voting on whether or not to approve the motion to amend Member Kayata's motion. If the vote is approved by a majority of the vote, then the board will vote on the original motion as amended, which would be President Pritchett, Vice President Villa, Second Vice President Phillips.
Okay, so we're voting on that slate, the amendment slate, and then we'll vote on yours.
We're voting on, we're voting on amending.
Yeah, yeah.
Member Singh.
And then he has a, he has a second from, he has a second on his slate from president, I mean, president, from-
Member Phillips.
Member Villa. No, Member Phillips, sorry, Member Phillips, and then we'll vote again. I hope that makes sense for people. I just want to be clear for people in our audience, how this is working, so it doesn't seem confusing.
I'm just going to try to say very simply, we're voting on the amended version. If that passes, that passes. If it doesn't pass, we go back to Taylor's amendment.
And this is the importance of making sure that we're all aware of how this works.
That's correct.
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right, so we will take a roll call on the amendment.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Singh. Member Rhodes.
No.
Member Jean.
No.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
No.
Member Phillips.
All right, the amendment fails. We will now vote on Member Kayata's slate. Superintendent, roll call.
Is there, is there-
Oh, is there a discussion based on the slate?
There's been a motion and a second. Now you may discuss Member Kayata's motion.
Saying no comments. Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
No.
Member Singh. Member Rhodes.
Yes.
Member Jean.
Yes.
Member Villa.
No.
Member Kayata.
Yes.
Member Phillips.
All right, respectfully, congratulations. Member Rhodes, would you like to take your seat?
I should say President Rhodes.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to take my binders? You have an agenda?
I have the agenda, yeah.
I have to take mine, okay. All right. Congratulations. Hello.
Hello. Are you now? It's been a while.
Very different, very different. Okay. Okay. We're going to move on to item 9.0, 9.1 actually, Approval Resolution Number 3301.
Good evening, members of the board, and welcome new board members. Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar. This presentation is on the resolution to commit funds. We'll go ahead and jump on in. Is there a clicker or? Got it, thank you. There we go. All right, so we're starting off with an agenda, oh, sorry. Thank you. Starting off with an agenda of the presentation, we're going to start off taking a look at an overview and background information on committed funds, then moving on into 2022, '23 First Interim Projected Reserves. Next, on to options to address the 10% reserve cap limitation, followed by First Interim Proposed Commitments and a summary. This is an overview of the Public School System Stabilization Account. This imposes a 10% cap on school districts' combined assigned and unassigned reserves once the PSSSA balance reaches or exceeds 3% of total Proposition 98 funding at the state level. That was triggered in the 21, '22 year, then requiring districts to have a 10% cap on their reserves in the '22, '23 year. As of the 2022, '23 First Interim Projected Reserves, the total 10% reserve cap is calculated at 77.7 million. Projected ending reserves of unassigned fund balance are at 95.1 million, so this leaves a difference above the cap of 17.4 million. In order to address the cap, there are three different options. The first being is to spend down the excess reserves on one-time programs supported by a defined plan. The second being to seek a temporary waiver from the Sacramento County Office of Education per Education Code. In order to do so, it must, one, have a statement substantiating the need for excess reserves; two, identify extraordinary fiscal circumstances; and three, provide evidence that no other fiscal resources are available to fund that extraordinary fiscal circumstance. The third option is to reclass the excess reserve to the committed or reserved category. This was the option implemented at the 2022, '23 adopted budget. This bringing forth to you today is a resolution to, excuse me, to revise that resolution and update the committed amounts as of the 2022, '23 First Interim Budget. So this is taking a look at the proposed commitments. There are two categories proposed. The first is history, social science, and world language textbook adoption. This was included at the adopted budget of 13 million. The second being a 3% additional reserve for board policy 3100. This was also included at the adopted budget. However, the figure is updated based off of the revised expenditures in the First Interim Report. The total is 36.3 million, and we're over the cap by about 17.5 million. And so in implementing this committed amount, it will make us below that 10% cap and in compliance with that, with the 10% cap. In summary, the board retains authority to change the purposes and/or amounts throughout the 2022, '23 fiscal year. This action must occur prior to the close of the 2022, '23 fiscal year, and the district will continue to monitor these purposes and provide the board with a status report at a minimum of each reporting period. And as we'll be getting into the next agenda item for the First Interim, you may recall some of the other committed items that were a part of the adopted budget, and some of those have been built in to the First Interim Budget and are part of the revisions brought to you today. And with that, approval of Resolution Number 3301.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
Sorry, we do not.
Comment from my colleagues. We have, oh, it says Darwin. Okay. Mr. Kayata primero, and then we'll go, Member Jean as well. Uh, Member Kayata?
Thank you, President Rhodes. Nice to say that. I'm going to start. This is not directed to you, so it may sound aggressive, but there's no way I'm voting yes on this tonight. I think this is incredibly misguided, and it's essentially a shell game of moving money around that should be spent on our students this year, that should have been spent on them in the past couple of years. I think it's a tragedy that we've gotten to a situation where our reserves are so high that we are over these limits. Every dollar that we're over the state minimum represents money that we chose not to spend on our students. And I, for one, ran for school board because I won't stand for that anymore. I am hoping that my colleagues will join me in finding that we need to reimagine what our district should do with the money that we get, and that would be to spend the money on our students, to invest in our teachers, to mention our staff, to invest in our communities. That being said, I understand that we're in a situation now where we do have all this excess money, we need to spend it, or we need to move it around, I guess, in some way if we're not able to spend it this year. So with that, I do have a couple of questions. First question is, if there's $13 million we're talking about moving towards textbook adoption, is that being put there for future plans, or do we actually have an immediate plan to do something with that money?
Sure, that's a great question. If I may defer to the superintendent.
Yeah, thank you, Member Kayata. We do have a schedule for adoption of textbooks, and I'm going to just ask our team, we did send a B.C., and I don't have it in front of me, but we could send you exactly the schedule for the rollout of upcoming textbook adoptions by fiscal year as well. But these are, these have been budgeted, so these are amounts that we would like to set aside to continue the rollout based on that schedule of textbook adoptions. Let me ask our team just very quickly, who might have the information in terms of the subject area matters, so that we can also be specific in terms of which subject areas will go in terms of purchasing over the next couple of years. I'm seeing if, sorry, Mr. Castillo, I'm-
Superintendent, I would say that that would satisfy my immediate question.
All right, I will make sure, though, that we recirculate that board communication. It actually, just as a reminder for our current sitting board members, this was prompted by the discussion that we heard earlier about cap city and textbooks and stuff. So it's actually a very recent B.C. that we will recirculate tomorrow.
Okay, and I have two more questions. I'll just put them both out there. My first question is whether anyone in the district has consulted with CDE on whether moving our reserves from being unrestricted reserves to restricted reserves actually satisfies the law. It seems to me like if it technically does, it really is not the intent. So that's the one question. And the other question is, I would like it explained what level of consultation we made with any of our labor partners, our schools, our community, about other possible ways we should spend money, or if this was decided just administratively.
Great, thank you. So for the first question, there is a number of guidance. One, the first that comes to mind is from FICMAT, Fiscal Crisis Management Assistance Team. And they do have very good, an outline, very good outline of the function of commitments and the various options that are included. So looking at the third option that we, that was implemented at the adopted budget, that does require a plan to, a formal plan in order to be added as a commitment. So it has to, it can't just be selecting a number and putting it on paper. There has to be a discussion around it and future plans to implement those within the budget at some point in the multi-year projections. And then speaking to your second question, I will defer that to the superintendent. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kayata. At this stage, what we did is we did follow the board policy that the board had passed indicating that when possible, that we would try to pursue the 3% above the 2% minimum requirement, and that's what we brought to, that's what we're bringing this evening to the board.
Member Kayata, do you have any more questions before I go to the next person?
Sorry, I just forgot to mention this, but another brief statement. I have also requested to be agendized in a future meeting that that board policy 3100 be rescinded. Thanks.
Okay, Member Jean.
All right, learning to push all these buttons is fun. Hi, thank you for that information. Just getting my feet wet here. What is our required reserve for economics uncertainty? Are we at the 2% or 3%?
We're at 2%.
2%, okay. So we've got our 2% required. And then the state has passed that when their rainy day fund hits a certain amount, school districts don't need to keep above the 10% because we know that the state has money and that we'd be okay. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, in that once it reaches a certain level at the state level, that cap does go into place per education.
Okay. And my big question, and this might end up going to the superintendent, I appreciate the idea of like, hey, let's make sure we're getting our adoptions happening and focusing on curriculum, but I'm concerned about how the 3% reserve is forwarding our true agendas of student equity and student success. I don't see how the 3% just getting put in a bank account does that. So I was just kind of wondering, is there a way to maybe come up with ways for that money to be going towards those goals? And, I don't know. Sorry, that's not a very clear question.
That's okay. I'm going to say, Member Jean, that because of this new legislation, what we were presenting to the board is how we are proposing to set aside and commit those funds. And I'll ask, and today we do have our partners at the Sacramento County Office of Education, but the question of the flexibility for how those funds are committed and under what kind of encumbrances, I'm kind of looking to Mr. Castillo and Scoey for the level of flexibility, if you will. But in this case, we're simply making a commitment of how we propose to use some of those resources above what's required.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. So I guess I can invite our partners from Scoey up to speak to that piece as well.
Thank you. Nicholas Schweitzer, Associate Superintendent with the Sacramento County Office of Education. I'm not quite sure I understood the question.
So in my mind, where you put your money is where you put your values. And I'm concerned that we're putting our money into a bank account instead of putting our money into student classrooms, into student needs, into student, I mean, we've all heard from the public comment how much our students need coming out of COVID and how dire the needs are in many, many ways. And I would love to see us be committing our resources to solving those problems. This doesn't feel like the 3% additional reserve when we're only required to have a 2%, and we're already way above the 10% does not make sense in my brain in terms of us truly putting our money where our values are. So my question is essentially, can we direct this money to those values as opposed to just putting it into a bank account?
So I tell you, your question is, you know, the need for the reserves, whether 2% is sufficient, what level of need reserves?
No, I'm not concerned about that. The state has already told us 2% sufficient, and that when we get over 10%, we don't need to keep it anymore. So I'd like to see us commit these funds to where they can go.
Okay, let me first of all, address whether the 2% is sufficient or not. So the 2% is a minimum level set by the state, minimum. Generally, you know, we at the County Office of Education, we're responsible for reviewing all the district budgets in the county and ensure they're- all the district budgets in the county and ensure they're sustainable. That 2% is one of the key triggers for us that we are actually required to. If a district falls below that 2% or is projected to fall below that 2%, we're directed to come in and start taking corrective actions with that district to get them up above that 2% as soon as possible. That's, that's state law. That's our responsibility. So 2% is, is a minimum. You know, generally, I don't think any other, any districts in the county currently have a reserve of, you know, as low as 2%. Most are really well above 2%. And we're, we're actually recommending that, that districts have reserves at the moment. You know, we're, you know, over the last three years, you know, state, the state economy has been really good. There's been a lot of great new funding for school districts, ongoing and one-time funding coming into school districts. It's looking like that's going to be moderating. We just got a report from the legislative, the state legislative analyst's office about a month ago indicating that state revenues are going to decline and funding for schools is going to decline. Now, we're not thinking that there'll actually be any cuts, but we're afraid that, you know, well, we know that a lot of that one-time money that's been coming in from the state, that's probably not going to come in anymore. We're afraid that the state may not be able to fully fund the COLA. Now, we, we think there's going to be a large COLA next year, but we're afraid that the state's not going to be able to fully fund it. And we're afraid that some other programs, the state may pull back on, on some other programs as well. Now, the L A O is not assuming a recession, but they're also saying that, you know, recession is, is, could, could very much, you know, they're, they're thinking that there's a high likelihood of a recession. And so, you know, we're, we're all county offices, we're all encouraging districts, you know, like this district, as, as you talk about how you're going to invest all this money in the kids, make sure that you're doing it in a way that's sustainable, that you're going to be able to continue to do it next year and in the years coming. And that's going to require maintaining some, some reserves currently, we believe, above, certainly well above the, the minimum level.
Member Jean? Did you have any further questions?
You talked about the 2%, what about the 10%? Why is the 10% not enough when the state has determined the 10% cap comes into case when the state budget has a whole bunch in its rainy day fund?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying the 10% is or is not enough. I think, you know, I think that's a, that's a decision that, that, that you guys should make, you know, based on sort of how you're committing the money. I'm saying that, that the minimum level is definitely not enough.
Thank you.
Next, we have Member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Rhodes. I have a quick question about, I know Mr. Schweitzer had alluded to that other districts are doing well above or above the 2%. Do we know what the, our neighboring districts or like districts are doing currently? Mr. Schweitzer, you just got comfortable, sorry.
Come back up, Mr. Schweitzer.
So I don't, I don't have that information at my fingertips. I will say that there are a lot of districts in the county that are, you know, have similar, as a percentage of their budget, do have similar sized reserves right now. A lot of it is because of the significant increases in, in ongoing and one-time funding the state has provided. You know, they're all, you know, doing, doing what you're doing right now, figuring out, you know, how much they need to hold back and then how much they commit, can commit to other things and, and currently, you know, invest now and how much to commit to, to things in the future. So that's, that's, every district in the county is, is, you know, doing what you're doing right now.
And so if this vote fails tonight, then what?
You know, I, I think, you know, it's probably not critical that it happened tonight. I think, you know, over time, it's something that you as a board are going to need to continue to discuss. And certainly when you come to do the next year's budget, you'll need to adopt, you know, certainly if you're above the 10% still, you're going to need to commit those funds to, to expenditures, whether it be, you know, next year's budget or in future years.
All right, and in terms of the 17, five, this is a question for Jesse, sorry. Is there any way of kind of shifting things around?
As far as commitments?
As far, as far as the funding?
Correct, you can, there is flexibility with the commitments as, as the board would decide on what commitments they would like to make. As far as the unrestricted versus restricted, those are two separate pots of money. And so those restrict unrestricted dollars remain on the unrestricted side. So there's not flexibility in shifting that from one to another. It's, it's using the, utilizing the commitments to, to commit those funds.
Okay, so with that, Superintendent, think, kind of thinking that one through in the, the line of questioning that's happened, are there any recommendations that you have?
What I would say, Member Pritchett, is as we recirculate the B C, I can tell you that just in terms of textbook adoption, there is probably some paths for us to speed up some of those adoptions. Adoptions are very expensive. And we've heard from a number of our staff, of course, that they've had to wait for some of those textbook adoptions for many years, given the expenditures. So I think what Mr. Schweitzer was indicating is that there is some flexibility for that. And we could have those discussions ongoing. And, you know, perhaps the, the B C could give us some, some, some of those ideas. And again, we will send that tomorrow for any further questions that board members might have.
Thank you.
Do you have any other? Okay, Member Phillips.
Being as the board retains authority to change the purposes and/or amounts at the, by the end of the fiscal year. And the fact that we have new board members and we have a board comm coming out. This may necess, not necessarily be something that we need to be voting on today. It's possible that we could look into maybe learning a little bit more about this, doing some of our, I don't know, educational sidebars or something to make sure that we're all clear before we vote on this again. Because I'm looking at the end of the fiscal year, not the end of this year. I should have been looking at you. I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Member Phillips or Vice President Phillips.
Sorry, I was just going to comment that that is correct. As Mr. Schweitzer shared, there is opportunity throughout the year to address the 10% reserve cap. It is, per the FICMAT guidance, it is just best practice to update it as you periodically bring reporting periods up. And so that's why it's before you here today, but there's certainly ongoing conversations that can occur before it's brought back.
Okay, so I'll join with Board Member Kayata in not necessarily agreeing to this currently. And I'd like for also to look into rescinding that board policy. I don't know if I need a second rescission, but.
I think that's a, there's no motion.
Then we're good.
Conversation we're going to have.
So I join with my colleague over here.
Thank you, Vice President. We're going to go to second Vice President Singh.
Thank you. Simple questions. Fiscal year, when does it end?
Sure, fiscal year ends June 30th, 2024.
And how many reporting periods?
2023, sorry.
All right. And then how many reporting periods are left up to 20, June of 2023?
Sure, there's the first second, first interim, which we'll be presenting next, and it'll be the second interim bringing brought to you in March.
All right. So reasonably, we'll have further information in March to help inform a decision that's required to be made by June of 2023. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Second Vice President Singh. And can we go to Member Kayata?
All right, thank you. I, I know I'm hogging this here, but this is, obviously, I'm very passionate about this. So to temper my previous comments, I'd just like to say that with the textbook adoption, you know, I don't have a problem with that. It is really with the moving the reserve to the reserve. So if this does fail tonight, what I would look for in terms of direction from staff would be to come back with ideally a plan that's consulted with community members and, you know, labor partners and whatnot, people who are on the ground to find places we can dedicate this money now with, you know, we won't have a fully fleshed out plan, but some general categories where it could be. With that said, I understand that, that, I mean, we don't have to vote today, I believe, if I'm understanding correctly, we have till the end of the fiscal. That might not be enough time. If it is at all possible to get the temperature on Scoey on whether we'd be able to go with the other option of getting a temporary waiver, I think that might be a deal. And I say that because, you know, understanding what Mr. Schweitzer said, that other districts are in the similar situation. I don't think we're like other districts. I think we have a lot more problems right now that we need to overcome that have been frequently discussed on this dais. I think we're in a unique situation where putting this money aside, even putting it into buckets where we want it, is not necessarily the flexibility we need. So I guess I'd say actually my preference would be if we could get a waiver, but I do see here that we don't think that's very likely. If not, put it in some buckets that are not just for the reserves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have second Vice President Singh again.
Oh, it's okay. It's just, it's, I mean, I I really agree with the concerns that we're talking about. And just to comment on that, Member Kayata, I guess, looking at the idea of getting a waiver, I think it seems better to maybe just have this conversation at a later date so that we can figure out some more information. I'd like to make an informed decision. And it doesn't seem like if we don't do this textbook adoption budget today, that it's going to slow down the implementation of textbooks, unless something's telling me that if I, if we don't vote on this, we're somehow not getting books out to our students tomorrow. But that doesn't seem to be the case.
That's correct. That would not impact that.
Yeah, so I'd really like to see us not tie that to this conversation about 3% additional reserve conversation. So I just want to add my name to that thought process around rescinding this policy of 3100 moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I guess what I would like to say from hearing from all of my colleagues around the topic and and then want and need to have a little more information, I would like to move to bring this policy back at a future date so that board members can, the new board members and other board members can get more information around this topic. And I would hope that my colleagues would support moving this to a different date, this resolution to a different date. So I guess, am I looking for a second, Anne, to that motion?
It's a motion to postpone, yes.
Motion to postpone, and I'm looking for a second from, so Vice President Phillips has second. Do we need to take a roll call vote, Superintendent?
Oh, I have a friendly amendment to that.
Okay.
Instead of postponing it, I would say that it should come back reflecting the discussion we had tonight, maybe with multiple options for a different policy. Thank you.
I, I accept your friendly amendment. And now Vice President Pritchett, I mean, haha, sorry, Vice President Phillips, do you still second the motion? Okay, now can we take a roll call to the motion?
Member Pritchett?
No.
Member Singh?
Yes.
Member Rhodes?
Yes.
Member Jean?
Yes.
Member Villa?
No.
Member Kayata?
Yes.
Member Phillips?
Motion passes with the amendment. Thank you so much. We will, we will go to item 9.2, First Interim Financial Report. Thank you, sir.
Stay up here for the next one. All righty, this is the presentation on our 2022-23 First Interim Report. Just before we jump in, wanted to share acronym table. I know there's quite a few here on the screen, but just wanted to share this as a reference point. As we go throughout the presentation, we will, we'll have some of these incorporated within our slides. And also wanted to note that those items highlighted in red are to indicate that they are one-time restricted funding sources. First, starting off with the agenda, we'll be taking a look at the financial reporting requirements and our district's fiscal status. We'll then be moving on to the first interim overview, followed by unrestricted and restricted changes. Next, we'll be taking a look at our multi-year projections update, followed by areas of need and summary. Lastly, you'll be up for approval of the 2022-23 First Interim Budget. California School District Financial Reporting Requirements. Per Education Code, school districts have to have two financial reporting periods, the first being first interim, which we are presenting tonight, and the second being the second interim, which is presented in March and has the actuals through January 31st. Has the actuals through January 31st. If either of these reporting periods, a district receives a qualified or negative status, they are required per ed code to provide a third interim report, which is actuals through April 30th. Taking a look at, at a high level of the first interim overview and compared to where we were at the adopted budget. So as you may recall, back in, on June 23rd, the state budget was still not finalized. So there was a number of items that were, or a number of uncertainties, including surrounding the COLA, ADA relief, as well as one-time funds. And then a week later, the state enacted budget was put in place. This did see a number of changes, including additional LCFF investment or augmentation on the total of 6.7%. We also had additional transportation funding added. We also saw the addition of arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant and one-time restricted funding source. And we also saw another one-time restricted funding source in the form of the learning recovery emergency block grant. Lastly, we saw the addition of ongoing restricted funding source in the form of the expanded learning opportunities programs. And so that brings us to where we are today. The First Interim Report incorporates these changes at the, from the state enacted budget. It also includes any other fund balance commitments and areas of need that have been added to the district or to the budget, excuse me. It also includes any other budget revision, revisions that have occurred since the district adopted budget. Another important piece is that it includes the updated beginning fund balances from our 21-22 unannated actuals. So just taking it back to June 23rd, at that point in time, we're still working with our estimated actuals on the prior fiscal year, 2021-22 had not been closed yet. So there are still a number of revenues and expenditures that had to be reviewed and closed out. That was finally completed during the unannated actuals period that was brought to the board back in September. And so these figures result in the ending fund balance, which is then flows into the beginning fund balance for our first interim report. Lastly, there is a number of one-time carryover revenue and expenditures added into the budget from the 21-22 year. This takes a high-level look at the adopted budget versus first interim on the revenue side. As you can see, we were projecting that adopted about 690 million in revenue. And here we are today projecting about 857 million or an increase of 167 million in revenue. This is split into two buckets, the first being unrestricted, which sees a decrease of approximately 18 million, and the restricted side, which sees an increase of 185 million. So before diving into any more detail, I wanted to highlight the different, the key differences between restricted and unrestricted funds. So starting on the restricted side, these dollars have a limited use. So they're, they're varied by grant program, but they do have specific allowability requirements in order to expend those funds. So for example, the recently added expanding learning opportunities program, those dollars must be used to provide before or after school programming, summer school program, programming or other intercessionary programming that's outside the regular school day. Similarly, another large addition is the learning recovery emergency block grant can also be used to fund intercessionary programming, could also be, can also used for provisions of mental health services, counseling, other things of that nature. But each of these individual grant funding sources do have specific allowability and specific requirements. And so it's important to be cognizant of those as we progress throughout the budget and share the next, excuse me, the next figures. On the unrestricted side, these typically do have more flexibility. This is where the largest piece of our funding comes from. This is our LCFF, our local. largest piece of our funding comes from. This is our LCFF, our local control funding formula. However, there is one bucket under the unrestricted side that does have some limitations. That is our supplemental concentration funds. These funds are generated by our unduplicated pupil count, which is our English language learners, our foster homeless youth, and those that are eligible for free and reduced price meals. And so these supplemental concentration dollars must be used to provide increased or improved services for those target students. So what makes up the difference on the unrestricted funds? In total, as I mentioned, an $18 million decrease. Starting off, we saw a change in state revenue, a decrease of about 45.6 million. This was due to the removal of one-time unrestricted dollars that were originally in the proposed budget and have been shifted to the restricted side. This also is offset by about three and a half million added for transportation funding. Next, we see an increase in the LCFF COLA. This is a total, excuse me, this is the increase in the investment on top of the base COLA. So it went from 9.86% to 13.26%, as well as the addition of ADA relief. Moving on to the restricted side, before I dive into that one too, also wanted to emphasize, you'll be seeing throughout the presentation, the term one-time carryover. And so as I mentioned earlier, at the adopted budget, we were still, didn't have final numbers for the 21-22 year. And then with the unannounced actuals report presented in September, we're able to have the ending balances for a number of these restricted grant resources. And so using those ending fund balance, or excuse me, those remaining balances, those are carried over as a one-time funding source into the current year and budgeted both on the revenue and the expenditure side. So you'll see that theme throughout. And so we also highlighted those in red to indicate that they are one-time sources. Starting off with $185 million increase, this is composed of 75 million in federal revenues, which includes, as I mentioned, budgeting and one-time carryover in those particular grant sources. Looking at the state revenue side, we see approximately $110 million increase. This includes the addition of 55.7 million in the learning recovery arts, music, excuse me, learning recovery emergency block grant, as well as 21.8 million in the arts, music block grant. Combined, that's about 77 and a half million of one-time restricted funds. Lastly, includes, additionally includes one-time carryover funds for those resources. So this slide is just a summary of those previous, the previous information on those slides. It shows a side-by-side of where we were at the adopted budget compared to where we are today with our unrestricted and restricted revenues. Of note, the transportation add-on does require a board-approved plans, spending plan adopted by April 1st, 2023. And the arts, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant also requires a board-approved plan. Excuse me. The learning recovery emergency block grant does not require a spending plan, however, it is recommended. This slide takes a look at our unrestricted expenditure changes. We do have more detail and line-by-line explanations of each of these in our executive summary. But for the presentation purposes, we just kind of want to highlight a few of the key changes. Starting on the certificated salary side, we see a decrease of approximately 2 million. This was a result of one-time savings recognized, of the, one-time vacancy savings recognized at the first interim. Looking at benefits, about a $2.8 million decrease. This is again recognizing one-time savings, both related to the salary adjustments from certificated, as well as health and welfare. Moving on to books and supplies, an increase of just under 6.9 million. This is due to the carryover of a one-time purchase order for textbooks of about 4.2 million, as well as additional site discretionary funds allocated. Moving on to services, this was due to additional areas of need included and budgeted within the first interim. Total change of 4.9 million since the adopted budget. Moving on to the restricted expenditure side, the change in certificated salaries due to some budgeting, some of those one-time carryover dollars. And we'll see that as a theme throughout each of these categories, actually. So looking at both classified and as well as benefits, majority of those funds are due to the budgeting of one-time carryover dollars. Looking at books and supplies, 23... There we go.
Back, it's back.
Books and supplies of 23.3 million does include a large chunk of one-time carryover budgeted within that category as well. And then looking at contracted services and other operating costs, again, one-time carryover dollars budgeted, as well as the budgeting of the expanded learning opportunities program. A total increase since adopted budget of 123.7 million. This slide shows how those previous revenue and expenditures for the current year flow into, into the combined beginning and ending fund balance. As you can see, the top table is representative of our first interim budget, and the bottom table is where we were at the adopted budget. And starting with the unrestricted column, the left, the left column there, about a 30.3 million increase on the unrestricted side, and a 49.4 million dollar increase on the restricted side, with the combined ending fund balance of 189.6 million. And compared to the adopted budget, where our combined ending fund balance was approximately 109.5 million. One of the other key differences I wanted to point out as well, again, as a result of the unannounced actuals, the second line from the bottom, on the bottom table, is the beginning fund balance as of the adopted budget. That was working with the estimated actuals figures. And so as you see in the first interim, that same line is now updated with the beginning balance figures from our unannounced actuals. Moving on to our multi-year projection revenue assumptions. So starting off with the unrestricted revenues assumptions, does include COLA, LCFF COLA of 5.38% and 4.02% in the subsequent years. Federal, state, and local revenues projected to remain constant, and we do project an increase in contributions to special ed in each of the two subsequent years. Moving on to the restricted side, in 23-24, as I described in the prior slides, those one-time carryover dollars are one-time in nature. And so as we look at the 23-24 year, those are then backed out or reduced from the budget. And so there's $77 million accounted for there with those various resources, including title, title programs, CSI, SIR dollars, ELOG, and ACIS. In 24-25 year, we see an additional reduction of 43.2 million, and this is to remove the one-time SIR III funds that are projected to be fully expended by the end of the 23-24 year. Moving on to state revenue, this again saw a reduction of approximately 85 million. This was to remove those one-time carryover funds that are added into the 22-23 budget, including for those particular grants sources. This also includes the removal of the one-time learning recovery block grant and the one-time arts, music grant. Local revenue is projected to decline about 227,000 due to removal of one-time funds as well. Taking a look at the expenditure assumptions, moving, looking at the two subsequent years, starting with certificated salaries, do have step and column adjustments. Excuse me, also includes the add-back of one-time vacancy savings recognized during the first interim report. And it also includes a six FTE reduction for projected enrollment declines, and a removal of three PD days currently built into the budget for 22-23. Moving on to classified salaries, this also includes step and column adjustments and adding back one-time vacancy savings, as well as removal of one-time settlement agreement costs. Moving on to benefits, these are, include adjustments for the salary adjustments described above, as well as increases in dental for all units and adding back one-time savings, and additionally, an 8% increase, projected 8% increase in health benefits. Moving on to books and supplies, we see a net decrease in 23-24 due to the add-back of one-time fiscal recovery plan textbook reduction, offset by that one-time textbook carryover purchase order described earlier. And we also see the removal of carryover supplemental concentration funds. Moving to 24-25, we see a slight increase due to budgeting additional supplemental concentration funds received. Services decreased by about a million to account for removal of one-time district areas of need budgeted in the current year, as well as an increase in 24-25 for projected increases in supplemental and concentration funds. Moving on to the restricted side, starting with certificated and classified salaries, again, both of these categories include adjustments for step and column costs, as well as the removal of one-time expenditures. These are offset by projected additional special education positions. And then looking at 24-25 year, adjustments again include the removal of those one-time SIR III funds that are projected to be fully expended by the 23-24 year. Those, some of those positions funded with SIR III, and we'll dive in this, into this a little more in the presentation, but those positions budgeted under SIR III in order to fully sustain those in the multi-year projections are shifted in the 24-25 year to the learning recovery and the arts, music block grants. Moving on to benefits, including adjustments in both of the subsequent years to reflect the salary changes noted above, and a projected 8% increase in health benefits. Lastly, books and supplies and services, both reduced due to the removal of one-time carryover funds for those various grant resources. Adjustments also include increases to special education materials, supplies, and services. So this slide takes a combined, and I apologize, it's a little hard to read some of these numbers, but this slide takes a combined multi-year projections and shows how those revenue and expenditure changes shared on the previous slides flow into our multi-year projections and form our beginning and ending, excuse me, beginning and ending fund balances as we look throughout the three, each of the three years. So as you can see, in the rightmost year, in 24-25, projected, projected net increase of 7.5 million on the unrestricted side. That's the leftmost column of that third year. And then moving on to the restricted column of that year, about a 37.7 million dollar decrease. The majority of that is due to budgeting the expenditure, those SIR III expenditures under the learning recovery and arts, music grants. In total, 179.2 million, excuse me, 0.1 million ending fund balance in 24-25. Before getting into the next portion of the presentation, I wanted to highlight the SIR III funded positions that are currently built into the budget and, as well as in the multi-year projections. Again, in that third year out, funded with the learning recovery and the arts, music block grants. Some of these positions include counselors, psychologists, student support specialists, teachers, social workers, other, other positions that are critical to supporting our students and our community. And so as we look at the next slides, we kind of wanted to, to highlight a summary of our multi-year projections to show the investments in those positions, as well as additional funds available to meet areas of need. So starting off with the restricted side, those, on the left-hand side is, it mirrors the right, sorry, the unrestricted should be probably below the restricted. So we'll start with the restricted side. We saw about 77.6 million in one-time grants. This is the combination of the learning recovery arts, music, excuse me, learning recovery emergency block grant and the arts, music grant. Subtract from that approximately 34 million in SIR III positions that were budgeted in there in the third year out, as well as back out about 4 million in professional learning budgeted under those resources as well. That leaves 39.8 million in one-time restricted funds available to be allocated. And then moving on to the unrestricted side, as I pointed out too, in the multi-year projection slide a few moments ago, in that third year out in 24-25, unrestricted increase projected is 7.49 million. And so there's a 7.49 million ongoing unrestricted funds potentially available to meet areas of need.
Mr. Christie, I just want to very quickly interject, particularly for our new board members. In terms of those SIR III positions, the previous slide just sort of showed several positions, not the totality of the positions. And what we will do is we will make sure that we provide a board communication that gives you the detailed information about how the $33.9 million of one-time funds have been used to properly staff, if you will, to meet the needs of our students. I just want to make sure that our new board members are, and our former, and our sitting board members as well, are just reminded that this is not the totality of the positions. And I want to make sure that, that we send you a more detailed report of how many counselors, how many nurses, how many psych, school psychologists, social workers, et cetera, that, that total funding has, has afforded in the district. So that's something that we will do in short order.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. And then moving on to the next slide. So as we shared, the 39.8 million in one-time restricted funds available to meet areas of need, and 7.49 unrestricted available to meet areas of need. So that flows into our next, our next slide. And this is some sample areas of need identified and, and currently in discussion. As I shared earlier in the presentation, there are some areas that are currently budgeted within the first interim report, but there are others that are, are not, but know that, identified as areas of need. These include student supports, safe learning environment, staff recruitment and retention, as well as attendance support. Taking a little more detailed look, includes professional development for staff, including science of reading, as well as anti-racist and anti-bias training. Also includes enhancing dual-language immersion programs, looking at hiring and retaining more instructional aides, replacing aging and worn classroom furniture, increasing site discretionary funds, as well as increasing more cameras and secure access points. Also, another area of need identified includes increasing safety staffing, expanding year-round athletic opportunities, and college application stipends.
Again, sorry to interject, Mr. Christie, but again, just for the board, this is not budget development, and I just want to make sure that you don't feel like you're approving anything. These are just some examples, particularly because some of these funding sources in being restricted do call for us to have to provide a plan. And we will be coming back to the board with more details around these kinds of expenditures that we'd like to make. Some of them are very aligned to things that you've heard. We heard some public comments today, for example, about dual immersion expansion. This is an area that our team has been concerned about and interested in for a long time. And it happens often that in our quest to provide dual immersion programs, we sometimes don't think long-term. And so we typically start with a K6 dual immersion program. And what you heard today, for example, from public comment is what happens in middle school. And so we are developing just internally, what would those plans look like from a master scheduling perspective? How many more teachers would we have to hire? How many more supports would we have to hire? And just preliminarily, I can tell you that if we were to think about expanding our dual immersion programs across the district that we have today to make them K12, it probably would be about a $5 million expenditure. And of course, we would want to make sure that that's an ongoing and sustainable investment so that students can in fact be promised and can go through an entire K12 dual immersion experience. We're very fortunate as a district that we embrace that kind of diversity. And so we have dual immersion programs in Mandarin, and Cantonese, and Mong, and Spanish. And so, again, this is not really budget development. So please don't treat this as you're adopting or approving any actual expenditures because we don't have them, we don't have the details that, that, that we would want you to have as a board.
Thank you, Superintendent. Moving on to risks and opportunities. Starting off with risks, there's uncertainty regarding ongoing state funding for K12 districts, as well as potential future impact of recessionary economy, enrollment instability, as well as potentially additional unfunded COVID-19-related expenses. Moving on to the opportunity side, potential for improved state budget and funding for K12 districts, potential for stable and increased enrollment, as well as the potential to make up instructional days lost during the 21-22 school year through the state waiver process. And with that, I'd also like to pass it over to my colleague Nick from SCOWE for the county office perspective as well.
Mr. Switzer?
Welcome back, Mrs. Switzer.
Yeah, thanks. I don't think I have too much more to ask, add based on, on the risks, you know, other than, you know, what, what the LAO has projected. I've also heard similar things from representatives from the State Department of Finance. So again, we'd encourage you as your, you know, you do have an incredibly strong budget at the moment. This is certainly the best budget you've, you've had, the most fiscal resources you've had in several years, perhaps a decade, I don't know, a long time. So it is, it is an opportunity to, to make some investments. We do strongly encourage you to make investments that are sustainable. And part of that is maintaining good reserves and maintaining, or not, not beginning to deficit spend, as has been an issue in the past. So, thank you.
Moving on to the summary, 2022-23 first interim report with a positive certification. And then looking at the district 2022, just a recap of the 2022-23 adopted budget, which was conditionally approved by SCOWE. The 21-22 adopted budget was also conditionally approved and has been, the district budget has been disapproved for three years, 1819, 1920, and 2021. And so SCOWE fiscal advisor remains assigned with state and rescind authority. With that, approved 2022-23 first interim budget. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we ask for a public comment, I will need to make a motion to extend our meeting. And so we're going, my motion is to extend the meeting to 12:30. Do we have a second? It's 12:30 at the maximum, guys. Want to make sure we have it down there. Hopefully we get done before that, but 12:30 maximum. So that's motion. Do we have a second to do that? Thank you. Anyone in favor? Say aye.
No.
Aye. No. Okay, motion passes with one no. Two no's. All right.
Three no's.
Motion still passes? Let's keep on moving. Approved, so.
Great, thank you.
Now, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, this opens up to board discussion, and we will go to members in.
Looking at the high amount of money in our restricted budget, I just wanted to confirm, is that predominantly based in supplemental and concentration monies? Or are there other restricted monies I'm not thinking about? And when I say predominantly, I mean predominantly. Don't give me all the details.
Sure, so looking at the restricted side, those would actually not include the supplemental concentration. Those are, do have limitations to those, how those can be spent, but those are on the unrestricted side. For the restricted fund balance, those are primarily composed of the learning recovery and the arts music block grants, which are received this year, but not fully budgeted on the expenditure side, so those fall to that reserve balance.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And second Vice President Singh.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm actually on slide eight. So just a simple question. It says that we removed 49 million in expected unrestricted funds and shifted those to restricted funds. So can you, is that one block of funding that you can talk about on what that 49 million was?
Sure, and I probably shouldn't have used the term shifted, I apologize, but from the state enacted budget, what originally was proposed was to have a $49 million unrestricted one-time funding source for the school year. By the time the state enacted its budget, instead of having that one-time funding source, it had implemented the learning recovery, emergency block grant, and the arts music block grant on the restricted side.
So we still have that 49 million, and we've moved it to restricted? Or we don't have that 49 million?
The latter. So the 49 is moved out of the, removed from the budget due to the state enacted budget, and then we add to the restricted side the learning recovery and arts music block grants.
Member Kayada.
Okay, thank you. I guess one question and then one request for the future. So the question is, do you have any update for us tonight on getting back the money that we lost from the strike, the penalty?
Sure, and the next presentation on the agenda will also go over some of the detail regarding our audit. But yes, the penalty total impact was about 47 million, includes about 46.1 on the district side and about 730,000 on the charter school side. And those are recognized in our 2122 year as accounts, as an adjustment to our revenue.
And I believe we're seeking a waiver from CDE. Is that ongoing?
There is the potential for a state waiver process, but that is still an ongoing conversation.
Okay. And then my request would be, I would like to see at a future meeting, some sort of analysis on our budgeting in the past. If there are certain areas, because we, I mean, I've been looking at these for multiple years and making comments about it on the other side of the dais. It seems like they're, we're off by a lot in many cases, which is understandable, but if there are certain areas that we are frequently off by, if we can identify what that is and how to account for that in the future, I would just be curious to see the data. And if it really is, we're off here sometimes and here sometimes, okay? Then at least we understand when we're looking at the next budget. So I'd just like to have that data before we look at a future budget. I don't know if there's other comments, but whenever there's a chance, I'd just like to say, really happy that we're looking at a positive certification here, and I would be glad to move approval.
Thank you so much. Then we're going to go to member Pritchett.
There's already a motion on the table, so there's no discussion after that motion, so I will stack it.
Thank you so much for that, member Pritchett. So we're going to go student preferential vote. Preferential vote on the. Okay, and then we'll do Board Member Roque.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Kayada.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And I'd just like to say, before you leave, it is very good to see a positive certification. I also would like to hear maybe in a later conversation around SCOWI's role moving forward and how, or what that plays into all of this positive certification. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the board here is, okay, independent audit report, 9.3. Are you here?
This one, I do get to introduce Mr. Jeff Jensen from our Crow Audit Team. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I'm Jeff Jensen. I'm a partner with Crow and your engagement partner for the independent audit. And I have a brief slide presentation here that boils down the 103-page report into a few slides here. So at the time of the evening, I'm sure you appreciate that. All right. Just a quick background on us. We've been doing school district audits for a long time. We're a large national firm and work with some of the largest school districts here in California and throughout the United States. And most importantly, we're independent of your district, which is what you hire us to be as your independent auditor. The audit is just about a year-round process as far as how it starts way back in the May timeframe and looking at the, the tone at the top is where we really start, and we look at internal controls. And from there, we develop our audit procedures that we go into, both from a compliance perspective and from a financial perspective. We assess levels of risk related to your audit, and that dovetails into the number of procedures we have to do in order to be able to render an opinion on your financial statements. So, you know, as I mentioned, the first phase started back in May looking at compliance and internal controls. The second time we visit is in the October timeframe, when we're actually auditing the numbers of the district and then wrapping it up with the actual audit report and filing it. Today was the deadline for filing audit reports with the state, and so yours was filed on time, which is also another good thing to point out to you as board members. Some of the other things we're required to communicate with you as your auditors is, one, we did not have any difficulties encountered in working with management and completing the audit. We didn't have any disagreements, or we're not aware of any other consultations with other accountants. So essentially, that would be if we were discussing a technical matter with management, and they disagreed with how, what we thought as far as the opinion would be, and they went and pitted us against another accounting firm to try to change our opinion or something like that, and we didn't have anything like that to bring to your attention. And also, we had no significant or adverse events that required anyone to bring any sort of attention to the board at an earlier time prior to our presentation here tonight. We did have a few findings in the report for this year. One is an internal control comment related to segregation of duties related to journal entry processing. This is a deficiency, and so in the world of audit findings, there are deficiencies, significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. Obviously, you can probably tell from maybe the language there that material weakness is the most severe, and deficiencies are smaller comments that, you know, we try to provide recommendations for improvement, and so this is one of those items. This is considered just a deficiency, and so part of it is just the separation of duties related to some of the financial processing that you do in your financial system. We also had a couple of state compliance findings, and there's a number of areas that we're required to look at from a state compliance perspective. And so we did have one finding this year related to immunizations. And so there's particular requirements there as far as when students are required to be immunized and prove to the district that they have received those vaccinations. And so we had one instance where that didn't occur, and so there is a small financial impact to that. And essentially, that's the loss of ADA for that student during that period where they should not have been admitted because they were not properly vaccinated in compliance with the state requirements. The second comment there relates to charter school attendance reporting, and really, this was kind of a clerical mistake here as far as reporting one of the charter schools as classroom-based rather than non-classroom-based. There's no fiscal impact to the finding, and the district will revise the reports to correct that situation. And then the other comments really are all come together as part of what happened related to the strike and the non-compliance with instructional days and instructional minute requirements. And as Mr. Castillo just mentioned there, obviously, there's the fiscal impact both to the district and to the charter operations there related to not offering a sufficient number of instructional days and minutes. The district has accrued for this liability as of June 30, 22, and is obviously working through the processes which just discussed as far as seeking a waiver. There are several different opinions that are in this audit report. The first relates to your financial statements, and the district received an unmodified opinion. That's the type of opinion you want on your audit report. It means your financial statements comply with all applicable accounting pronouncements and are free of material misstatement. Next is federal compliance. You also received an unmodified opinion regarding federal compliance, and so that means that the district had no federal compliance findings related to the work that we did for this year. And then the last opinion is state compliance, and the district received a qualified opinion here, and that's because of the compliance findings that we just discussed. So just to wrap up my comments, the district's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. The, there were no federal compliance findings. Management and staff at the district and throughout the district were prepared for our audits, to which allowed us to be able to complete it on time and be able to be here tonight to present it to you. So just to elaborate on that, second to last comment, you know, there's a lot of things that go into the audit, and we talked to a lot of folks throughout the district, both at the site level and here at the district office. And we appreciate the willingness of everybody to work with us, to be able to gather the work that we need to be able to do to be able to finish this audit report and be able to bring it to you. So with that, I'd be able to, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any public comment on the item?
We do not.
Okay, now opening up to my colleagues. Do we have any board member comments on the item?
Seeing none. This will go into student, I'm sorry, student preferential vote.
We need a motion.
Motion, oh, motion to approve. Sorry about that. Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Student preferential vote. Thank you very much.
Aye.
Superintendent.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rhodes.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Kayada.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for service.
Thank you for the opportunity to work with the district.
Okay, next, we're going to go to item 9.4.
Good evening. President Rhodes, Superintendent Aguilar, Member McGurk, board members. Today, I want to present on and ask for your approval on Board Policy 7310, Naming of Facilities. This was first shared with the board at the last meeting on November 17. This is the second time coming to the board. No additional changes to the policy have happened from that first meeting until today. Real quick, acronyms, you only see one throughout this presentation. BP stands for Board Policy. So why I'm asking for your approval tonight is because Board Policy 7310, Naming of Facilities, was last updated in the late 1990s. The language was really brief, rather short, and really only focused on naming facilities after individuals living or deceased and geographic locations. It really outlined a very vague process for community engagement and allowed for the renaming of facilities only under extraordinary circumstances, which was also quite vague. So the proposed policy revisions before you this evening calls for the renaming of facilities that incorporates the district's mission and vision, core value. Allows for the naming of facilities to focus on a number of different areas beyond just individuals and geographic regions, but also landmarks, cultural events, historic events, flora, and fauna within our region. It also allows for the naming of facilities that incorporate academic focus of those facilities as well. It doesn't, it still retains the ability to name facilities after individuals, but it's much more stringent and focuses on individuals that have been deceased and that their primary legacy out is, relates to, and is in line with the district's mission and vision. And it refines language around the oversight and encouragement of community engagement. So the impetus for the policy changes are the current naming or renaming efforts of Sutter Middle School, Kit Carson International Baccalaureate, and Peter Burnett Elementary School. And the proposed revisions also clean up just the naming process in general. Over the last few years since I've been with the district, I've seen instances where names of facilities are brought to the board, and there isn't much community engagement or as much robust community engagement as we would like to see. Also, there's been question about the naming of facilities after individuals who were currently still living, and their legacy hadn't yet been written. So this policy works to clean up a lot of those issues, concerns. So the next steps are to ask for your approval of tonight's policy revisions and continue working on the renaming efforts of Sutter, Kit Carson, and Peter Burnett. I know that many of you are probably very interested on the renaming efforts of Sutter, Kit Carson, and Peter Burnett. This would be a first step to that. Please allow me the opportunity to come back and give you a much more detailed update on those items.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Seeing we have a couple of board comments, we'll go to member Pritchett.
Thank you, President Rhodes. Thank you, Nathaniel, for this, Mr. Browning, for this presentation. I'll move this from conference to action.
Member Pritchett, do you have a second to move it from conference to action?
Second.
Second? Okay, so move, we're going to move it to action. Now we have, yes, we have Vice, second Vice President Singh.
Thank you. Seeing these schools are in my area, so I definitely do have an interest. I have a question. You, I'm looking at California Education Code 221.2, which talks about mascots as well. Have we had a conversation about mascots? Can that be included? Is that something we've discussed yet? It's kind of a, I guess it's a question for you, but also a question that opens up for the board as well, but I'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, so going into the renaming conversation around the three sites mentioned in this presentation, we also know that there are some mascots that need to be addressed, most notably Hiram Johnson and West Campus. They're both mascots, they're both warriors, but they have stereotypical mascots still in place that look very similar to a Plains Indian. And so it's always been part of the renaming process to focus on the renaming of these sites because of sites because of the egregious nature of the names that they carry. But then the second portion of that would be going in and getting rid of and addressing those mascots of those two sites.
Thank you. I just want to note that for me, I had to do my homework on those names, but I don't have to do my homework when I visit Hiram Johnson, right, in terms of feeling offended, seeing something that offends our indigenous community members, thinking about things that we have done to take steps to acknowledge folks. I think there's a lot of space. I think there's land acknowledgements and other things, but sometimes doing the very basic thing of acknowledging someone's existence as a human being and not as a mascot is a great first step. So I would just welcome us to have that conversation as well at some point, that we include the mascots specifically as a part of this discussion and include the community to give comment. But I also want to specifically state that if we're going to be removing indigenous mascots, that we explicitly include the indigenous community in conversations for situations like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Villa?
Thank you for this. I just quickly want to note, obviously, I'm very excited about this process. It's a long time coming. I know there was a lot of hiccups along the road to get here, so finally, we're getting to that space. Just quickly wanted to note that the group that you have in this committee are phenomenal individuals, and you have folks from different backgrounds, indigenous groups that are ready to work together, create space, talk in first draft, and really get that work done. So I know folks have reached out, and they're very excited about this process. So continue the good work. We're here to support you.
Thank you very much. And just to be clear, I know that, member, we're going to do a student preferential vote on this and then take it to the members, but do we have a motion to move it?
I'll move Board Policy 7310.
And second by Member Villa? Okay, so with that being said, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Roll call.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, motion moves. Thank you so much, sir. Next, we'll go to item 9.5. She's coming up. Hello. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Board Member Rhodes, Superintendent Aguilar, and board members. Dr. McCarron and I are here this evening to present to you and ask for your approval of credential waiver applications. Edcode provides an opportunity for districts to waive a portion of credential requirements in order to allow educators time to complete their credential requirements. In order to submit credential waivers, applications for certificated employees in need, CTC, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing, requires a public notice process and board approval prior to submission of any waiver applications. That is why we're here this evening. Here are the data trends of credential waiver requests for our district over the last few years. As you can see, we're continuously working with our employees to meet their credential The application listed here is currently, the applicant, excuse me, listed here is currently working on meeting their CTC requirements in order to obtain their English learner authorization to provide instruction to English learners. The waiver requested this evening will allow this teacher the additional time needed in order to complete their English language authorization while they continue to work with our students.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Board discussion? Member Pritchett?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I will move this from conference to action.
Do we have a second to move from consent? Was that from Member Villa?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we're in action. Any board comment? Any motion to move forward?
I will move item 9.5.
And second, can we get a roll call?
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next up, we're going to go to 9.6, Sacramento Teachers Association. Hello, David and Nikki.
So if you notice on the agenda, the next item is our report, so if we're allowed the time just to roll into that rather than come back, we won't need too much. But good evening. As you know, I'm David Fisher, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. First, staying with the theme of the evening, I want to start by welcoming Member Jean, Member Kayata, and Member Singh. It's great to see you all up there, and we are really looking forward to a board that can work with their labor partners and their staff to really move the district forward. We immediately have a great opportunity to build a foundation for a better relationship going forward. Our re opener, last spring, the staffing crisis and the district's mishandling of it led to an eight-day strike. And while some progress occurred, there is much work yet to be done. Today, for example, there are over 125 full-time equivalent vacancies in the certificated bargaining unit alone, leaving thousands of students every day without a certificated educator. What you're receiving right now is our sunshine proposal. According to the provisions of the April 3, 2022 Tentative Agreement between SCUSD and SCTA related to the 2019 to 2022 successor contract, the parties agreed to, quote, "resume negotiations on reopeners on or before December 1, 2022," end quote. The parties agreed to reopen on Article 12 compensation, quote, "plus one additional article selected by the district and one additional article selected by SCTA," end quote. On November 28, 2022, SCTA requested bargaining dates from the superintendent to begin negotiations consistent with this agreement. On November 30, 2022, the superintendent responded to the district with sunshine its proposals at tonight's meeting. We responded by asking for time to present our sunshine proposals tonight and then offered bargaining dates so the bargaining could begin as soon as tomorrow. On December 9, 2022, the superintendent responded with the following, quote, "With the certification of the election yesterday, the district has three new governing board members. Therefore, the district plans to sunshine its initial proposal for re-opener negotiations at our January board meeting," end quote. The January board meeting is scheduled for January 19, 2023, and the district yet has offered any dates to meet. Nevertheless, and consistent with our April 3, 2022 Tentative Agreement, SCTA hereby gives notice of its intent to reopen negotiations in the following articles. Number one, Article 12 Compensation. As was discussed tonight, SCUSD is in the best financial position in its history. For 12 of the last 13 years, in fact, the district has ended each fiscal year with a surplus. In the last three years alone, according to the district's own unauthorized actuals, SCUSD has ended each year with significant surplus. In 2019-20, you ended with a $23.5 million surplus. In 2021, $19 million surplus. 2122, $44 million surplus. In each of those, the superintendent and the Sacramento County Office of Education projected massive deficits of $12.3 million in 1920. They projected a $75.3 million deficit in 2021 and a $6.7 million deficit in 2122. In short, the superintendent and the Sacramento County Office of Education have been wildly inaccurate in their budget projections and perpetuated a provably false narrative that the district was on the brink of insolvency. Fortunately, the district finances are currently so robust that the school board is required to spend down the amounts in this SCUSD unrestricted reserve fund that exceeds 10%, approximately $77 million. That is an additional $36 million more or in addition to the roughly $750 million regular budget. Notably, SCUSD staff is projecting a three-year budget that reflects the district's structural surplus, a surplus of $30.4 million in 2223, surplus of $23.3 million in 2324, and $7.5 million in 2425. The district's ongoing increase to its LCFF funding for 2223 is 12.86%. And the state's legislature has already begun to propose additional ongoing increases in the outlawing years that exceed the COLAs used in the district's current first interim budget calculations. We also know from experience, the district has grossly underprojected Sac City's strong financial performance, and every expectation is that the actual surpluses for 2223, 2324, and 2425 will be significantly higher than the first interim budget projections. Despite the strong financial position, the district is still plagued by an ongoing staffing shortage. As of December 6, 2022, according to the information provided by the superintendent, SCUSD had 125.998 full-time equivalent vacancies just among certificated staff, likely the highest rates of vacancies of perhaps any large school district in the entire state of California. While other districts dramatically raised pay of the substitutes, the district refused to extend the increase to substitute pay negotiated in April 2022 and subsequently reduced substitute pay by 25%. To fill vacancies, the district has resorted to spending millions on outside contractors in violation of our agreement and thereby exposing the district to millions in back pay liabilities and legal fees. That matter, too, is headed towards arbitration, and I will add, many of our schools, and certain ones are impacted more than others, are daily without substitutes and having once again to combine classes or have students in the cafeteria. And as mentioned, the other districts around here have extremely, have raised rates for the substitutes extremely while we, like I mentioned, for whatever reason, reduced our substitute pay by 25%. Our proposal on Article 12 will address these issues and take additional and significant steps to meeting our community's goal and expectation that every student has a qualified educator in the classroom who reflect the diversity of our community. The second article that we'll open is Article 17, Class Size. The agreements we negotiated in April 2022 to settle the strike took major strides to address workload issues that affect our students' learning conditions. Unfortunately, the district first refused to fully implement those agreements, and arbitrator has just been selected to ensure compliance with the agreement, and then refused to extend those agreements beyond June 30, 2022. In addition, studies have repeatedly shown that students have a greater opportunity to succeed when class sizes are lower and there are additional support professionals available to provide services to students. Additional unfair practice charges are pending based on the superintendent's refusal to discuss the implementation of MTSS as well as community schools. Our proposal will provide an opportunity for us to develop a shared vision with enforceable standards for providing the education that our students deserve via the staffing of certificated staff, including at community schools. Having learned lessons from the past and with new leadership on the board, we hope that this round of negotiations is constructive and collaborative with decision-makers at the bargaining table, ready and willing to work with us to ensure that our students receive the education they so richly deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any, it's an informational item, but do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay, and do we have any board comment? Member Villa?
Yeah, I just want to note, moving forward, if we're going to have documents that are provided to us, can we get a source of information at the bottom, similar to when we have our presentations that have acronyms? Mr. Fisher, it'd be really helpful if you're noting facts stated on this, that highest rates and such. If you could just create a cite or cite that work, so I know exactly where that's coming from, because I would like to see if that's the accuracy of that statement. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Borzos. I appreciate that. If you could provide that in an email, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Next, what we'll do, anybody, any other board comments? This was only informational item, so we will go to item 10.1, Employee Organization Reports. We heard from SCTA, it's SEIU, TCS, or Teamsters UPE here? No? Okay, do we have any of item 10.2, District Advisory Committees? Do we have the Community Advisory Committee, ELAC, LCAP, Student Advisory Council, African American? Do you have anything? No? Okay, LCAP? Come on down, Frank.
Could we put, yeah, three minutes on the board for Frank here? Floor is yours, sir.
First of all, my name is Frank DeYoung, and I'm an LCAP member representing Area 5, Mr. President. And congratulations, Mr. President. Congratulations, all new board members. I'm looking forward, and so is the LCAP committee with working with you. We've had two meetings since the last time we did a report, and the meetings have been productive. The last meeting was on MTSS, and we went over that, and we also began to work on what we think the priorities should be for the LCAP this year. And I will share with you what the number one priority was, the learning gap. To us, that is more important than anything else that we're looking at right now. We got one shot to take care of these kids, and if we don't get it right, we're going to lose a whole generation of children here. And so that was found to be very important to us. We had a meeting with the superintendent. We understand the importance of data and needing data and being able to tie it to academic outcomes. So we see that as something that is important as well. Now, how feasible it is to get all that data and tie it, you know, that's another story, and that's for the district to work on. Other than that, I guess the challenge would be to ask the new board members in their areas, if they don't exist, we should have 16 members on that committee. We currently do not. So if it's at all possible, we would like to get a full committee, because it's really important that all areas are represented in that committee. And so with that, that's the report. We will be meeting again in January, and that's our plan going forward. We're working on our schedule. We're going to be, the district has hired a new LCAP director, is my understanding, and so they will be coming on board, and we will be meeting with them and starting to work out the working relationship and how we're going to go about going forward. Thank you for your time. I wish you all a happy holiday, and thank you again.
Thank you so much, Frank. Terrence, are you here for AAAB with your public comment? Okay, so seeing we have one public comment to this, we'll call Mr. Glanny up, and then we'll open it up to my colleagues if they have any discussion.
In this space, as a community member, also as a member of other committees like BAAAAB, I've asked for specific data about MTSS, which was presented to us. The data wasn't presented, but the topic was. In this space, as a community member, I've asked for basically any semblance of a return on investment, right? We're in Cohort 3. We continue to pour resources into this specific framework, and my questions are around the impact on specifically the populations which we're supposed to uplift and give equitable outcomes, so that we just know as we move along in this process, is there any semblance that those students as the teachers are undertaking this transformative, high-quality instruction? Are we seeing outcomes even creep up a little bit? And I understand it can't be possibly directly correlated, but I would assume that if we're changing the mindset of teachers at these school sites, we should see something. I've asked from the presentation when Julius Austin and I presented for BAAAAB, was told the MTSS presentation that succeeded that would provide answers to the questions we asked about racist incidents at different school sites and impact on students. That did not happen. I've asked, again, specifically for data, if we are a data-driven district and we're focusing and prioritizing the outcomes for specific students, what are the mechanisms that we're using as we are rolling out employing more? using as we are rolling out and pouring more resources into frameworks such as this? Not necessarily to say, do they work, because we know that they do. We heard about, you know, the community schools, you know, process and program. If implemented correctly, we know that they work. So my questions are around our implementation. Are we doing it with fidelity in the way this intended? And can we glean from the way that we choose to implement it, outcomes? Because I didn't get those questions answered in this space as a community member, I asked them as an LCAP PAC member, and they weren't even presented to the team that was presenting the presentation to us. So I guess I return that to you guys and uplift the importance of governance, not only in this space, so that when we ask questions, we have a mechanism to get them answered here, so I don't have to carry them into other spaces. But then further from the top down all the way to the school site, whatever the committee, whatever the space that a person comes for, whether it's a community member, parent, how do we get answers and how do we get the data that we're seeking? Because it comes from a place of wanting to speak and uplift, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Gladney.
Thank you.
For your time. We have member Villa. Okay, then we have member Jean.
Thank you for letting us know about LCAP. I know that we've got a lot of information coming our way as newbies, but I'd love a list of our current LCAP members and the areas so that we can can get to work on making sure that you are fully staffed. Super, super important. And then I kind of have a larger comment question. I've noticed that our communications are agendized so late, and that seems, I would love to see that our employee organization reports and our advisory committees are given a chance to speak to us earlier on the agenda, because asking them to wait through the entire meeting when we go so late, asking the Student Advisory Council to be here this late when they need to be at school tomorrow is concerning to me. So there's just, I don't know what the process is to talk about shifting the agenda, but I would love to see these communications be earlier on our agenda.
Thank you, thank you for that, member Jean.
We would like that, too, by the way.
Great, great, great. Seeing there's no other board comment around the subject, we are going to go into 10.3, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Rhodes, and I'll be very brief here, given the late hour. I, of course, also want to just thank and welcome our new board members, members Jean, Kayada and Singh. Tonight, as you know, is our only board meeting for December as we get closer to the winter break, and although our schools will be closed starting next week or as of last, as of Friday the 23rd and all the way through January 6th, I do want to remind our community that our Nutrition Services Department through our central kitchen will be working to feed our students and community with curbside food distribution. One event on Wednesday, December 28th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at five of our school sites, and of course, we will post this and make sure that our social media outlets are promoting this throughout our community. But just for the purposes of mentioning it now so that people can put that on their calendars, those five sites are Bowling Green, John Still, Pacific, Sequoia, and Willsey Wood. The food boxes provided by, the food boxes will be provided by the Sacramento Food Bank, and they will be available for all students, staff, and our community. A second food distribution event will be held on Wednesday, January 4th. Again, we will make sure that we're promoting this very widely. Also want to remind our community that we, and we mentioned it a little bit, we're in the process of adopting new instructional materials for history and social sciences starting 2324. Our teachers, students, and parents and guardians have the opportunity, and I encourage you to review and provide input about those materials being considered for adoption, and we absolutely want your feedback. Those materials are available on the second floor here at the CERNAS Center in the foyer. It's a very nice display on the second floor, and you can review the different materials that we are considering along with many other educators throughout the district. Of course, we will be very careful in our selection as we evaluate with great care so that they in fact support the adopted courses of study and meet curricular goals that we have. Another important date that will be occurring after we return from winter break is the opening of kindergarten registration, which is on Tuesday, January 10th. To be eligible to register for kindergarten for the fall of 2023, children must be five years old on or before September 1st of 2023. This year, parents will have the benefit of using Sac City School Finder, which we're excited about, and we just launched recently to determine their child's school of residence based on school boundaries and learn about all of our school options. Also, many of our elementary and K-8 schools are also hosting school tours and information sessions for prospective families and board members. We will make sure that we're providing some of that information as well, should you want to participate and encourage other families to be part of those tours. Turning to a topic that is of concern for all ages and our community and country, of course, I'd like to take a moment to thank and commend the board for approving the recent update to our board policy on administering medication so that we can stock our campuses with Narcan to prevent overdoses. We're very proud that the board took action, leaned in, and were among the very first districts throughout the region to do that. Our Student Support and Health Services Team, led by Victoria Flores, has done a remarkable job communicating the risks of fentanyl and also the resources available to parents. This month, our staff and students at CK McClatchy were featured nationally on PBS NewsHour for a report about how our schools are responding to the fentanyl crisis. On Tuesday, November 29th, we partnered with Arrive Alive California, the county of Sacramento, and the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office to host an informational webinar on fentanyl awareness to help families learn the signs of fentanyl use and learn about emergency Narcan administration. And finally, before we head into the winter break, I'd like to remind our school community, our entire community really, because we've been of service to the entire community, that we will be sending home over-the-counter COVID test kits starting next week. These test kits are Intelliswab brand and are a little different than what we've sent home previously. We will be including easy-to-read instructions for our families to make sure that tests are done properly, and we absolutely strongly urge our families to report their student's result through primary health, whether it's positive or negative prior to our student's return. If you remember last year, in the midst of Omicron and right before, we were able to identify over 500 cases through the same strategy, and again, we were proud that we were among the only districts that had invested that heavily in this strategy well before the state provided the level of test kits for our use. And the last thing related to that, of course, is today is Thursday, and so we're monitoring every Thursday CDC county-level updates around COVID, and Sacramento remains in the medium level. This means that we will continue to be strongly recommending masking but not requiring them through the last day of school on December 23rd. We will continue to monitor the COVID level throughout the winter break and communicate any changes to the families. Although we're still a week away, I do want to wish all of our families a safe holiday season, and we look forward to continuing to serve everyone in Sac City Unified. Thank you, President Rhodes.
Thank you, Superintendent. Now we're going to president report, 10.4. I would like to say this has been a very eventful day here at Sacramento Unified School District, but also we want to share out some events that are happening in our district. On December 20th, there is a student council elections and speeches at Parkway Elementary School. I invite my colleagues to come hear future leaders talk about what they want to see better at their school and present their case for being on the student council. Also, December 17th, this Saturday, we have Breakfast with Santa at John Still. I will be Santa Claus, and I also encourage all my colleagues, my LCAP representative, also to come out and enjoy some pancakes and some good times with families there at John Still. That concludes my first president report, very short, but next one, we'll get it a little bit longer for you guys. Now we have student member report, 10.5.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, information sharing by board members. Member Phillips?
Vice President Phillips?
Thank you, President Rhodes. I had the pleasure of participating, not participating, but observing a family home visit. That is something that we just need to keep in mind, that it's extremely instrumental in keeping families together. What I saw was not just teachers coming to a home to visit students, they came to visit the whole family. They had history. Oh, I had you in kindergarten and blah, blah. It was this entire world that opened up. So, I mean, as a social worker by trade, I do understand that that connection with our educators and our students is really important. I also want to let you know that January 21st of 2023, we'll be painting murals at Father Keith B. Kenny. I'm very excited about it, but I'm putting out the call for folks who know how to paint murals, because we need some extra folks who can paint murals. So my email address is on the website for Sacramento City Unified School District, and you can send me your name, and I can connect you with who you need to be connected to, because we're looking for local artists right now. It costs a lot to paint, so keep that in mind. January 21st, it's a Saturday, please come out to Father Keith B. Kenny. Thank you.
Amazing. And then also, it would be amazing if all board members could have access to the parent teacher home visits. I think that is something that board members should be able to see, so I look forward to other board members experiencing like you did, Vice President Phillips. Do we have any other sharing out for board members? Okay, before we go to our consent agenda, I would like to pull item 11.1H, number six and eight for a conversation. Six, six and, I think, I think it was six and eight, was it not? Six, seven and eight. My apologies. Yeah? Okay. Okay, perfect. And so do we have, he's not here. Okay, so.
I believe you're pulling six, seven, and eight from 11.1H.
Yes.
Not for discussion.
Not for pulling it, yeah.
You're just pulling them off of the consent.
For to have the vote.
And then you, and then you can vote on the remainder of the consent calendar.
Correct.
Excluding items six, seven, and eight from 11.1H.
Thank you for the clarification. You'll move to that?
Yeah.
Do we have a second? Yes.
No, I did not say yes.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Just one, being very, very picky, I did not attend the May 5th, 2022 board meeting, and we're approving the minutes of that meeting, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable approving since I was not there. So should I just abstain? Because I don't necessarily want to halt the rest of the work. I just don't want to approve the minutes since I wasn't in the meeting. Would you want me to? Okay, I would like to pull 11.11 or 1L, 11.1L.
Okay, do we have a second for 11.1L? Second? Okay. So we have a motion to move the agenda except for 11.1L and 11.1H, six, seven, and eight. Okay. So I will move that. Do we have a second to that? We had a motion to, for the first one to prove yours, and she added to that, and so then I'm, so I'm, so I'm moving, so I'm moving to. Okay, thank you. And we have a second. Okay, roll call, vote.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going back to the approval of minutes. Can we have a roll call vote around approval of minutes? And our second roll call vote, I mean, student preferential vote, I apologize.
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Jean?
Abstain.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Singh.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Kayada?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now we're moving to 11.1H, item six, seven, and eight. Number six, seven, eight.
Those have been removed from.
Those are removed. We're going on 11. I, I got it. Thank you so much.
The remainder of 11.1H was approved.
The remainder besides the ones that were pulled. I will move that forward.
It's already been voted on, so there's nothing left to vote on.
Stavien, stavien. Okay.
Do we need to officially table what we pulled, or is it?
It's already tabled.
Okay, we're good.
That's what I said. Thank you guys so much. Now we will go to item 12.0, business and financial information, 12.1 actually. Okay. That's you guys, yeah.
Good evening again. This is just presenting or receiving information for our month two, ending Friday, October 21st, 2022, as well as the purchase order board report.
Thank you. Seves? And then future board meeting dates and locations. We have January 19th, closed session starting at 4:30, and then we have February 2nd, closed session starting at 4:30. Again, I will move to adjourn, student preferential.
Yes, let's get out of here.
You see all, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.